Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December 13th, 2023 workshop for School Board of Manatee County. Some agenda amendments. The Chair has found some good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the December 15th, 2023 Agenda, updated December 13th, 2023, and posted to the District Website, manteschools.net. A lot of them were the presentations we're doing, some typo errors, things like that, that were amended for this morning's workshop. We're going to jump right into public comments. We've got two public comments today. We've got Heather Felton, followed by Marie Masfer. So Ms. Felton, you want to come on up? You've been here before, so you know the gist.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to speak to you about the agenda discussion item about public comment today. As it stands, you can submit your email, or you can come speak to the Board. I am urging you to consider allowing other means of public comment, or changing meeting times to allow the public to attend. At this time, you have a meeting at 10:00 in the morning on a Tuesday. I was not able to attend this week due to circumstances beyond my control. And then you have a meeting at 5:00. Our teachers are in school at 10:00 in the morning on a Tuesday. All of our staff are in school at 10:00 in the morning on a Tuesday. They can't attend the meetings. At 5:00, our working families, our parents, are just getting off of work. And if any of you have tried driving anywhere at 5:00, you know it's going to take you an hour to get here. So again, they're not going to be able to access the public comment. So to be able to be heard, and not just, you know, an email plugged into your screens, but to be heard, they need to have a voice. The human voice is powerful and important, and they need to be heard, not just skimmed over on your agenda. So please consider some means of allowing your public to speak to you, your constituents to speak to you, or if that is not something that you want to fully embrace, then consider in the coming year, adjusting one of your meeting times to a time when those working families, those teachers and staff can come and speak to you in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I did put in for two, just because I had different topics, but I will make that more concise. I'm here on behalf of a group called Read on Manatee. We actually are asking the Board, number one, to return all the books. I have several pieces, and the statute that I'm referring to is 10-06.28. There are several pieces of that statute that current policy and the policy you're considering today, they do not meet state statutes. So we're asking that all the books that have been removed to this point, that do not meet the criteria of state law, be returned to the shelves. I don't know if you're aware, but you do not have a librarian with a Masters of Library Science at the district level, and I do believe that's part of the reason that statute has not been met. I have heard from librarians across the district that they have review committees that included parent and community input as required by law, but they were told by district leadership that that did not matter, the review committee decisions did not matter, and the principal was fully responsible. If you will look at the statute that I refer to, you are responsible. The Board has a responsibility. If any material is removed from a school, singular school, it does not have to be the Board, but if you remove a title from the entire district, that's a Board decision. And to this point, as far as I know, it's not been taken to the Board. And it says it can't go into consent agenda, so I don't think I missed anything. The other is in the sunshine. The latest law in this statute is that every book review committee must be done in the sunshine, and there are no records. We have requested them by public records request. There are no records of any meetings. If you refer to a SAC meeting in October at Braintree River High School, that is the only piece we could see where SAC committees are being informed. Also, parents are being told that they cannot object to a book being pulled off the shelf to get it back on. We have groups that have used the word, "We will infiltrate your SAC committees to get books off the shelves." So we have outside groups without children in our schools who are pulling books from the shelf, but yet parents whose children should have access to materials do not have a right. The critical piece of the governor's legislation is that parents will have full rights, and parents' rights are being violated for outside groups pulling materials, and yet they have no say to get those materials back into their schools. So please operate in the sunshine, make sure that parents are actually involved in the process of pulling books or keeping books, and that principals are not the final say. And that is in your new policy being considered today, that principals have the final say. They do not under state statute. You do. Also, there are shadow bans going on. The fear and librarians are being told, "If you have a troublesome book, or you're worried about this book, get it off the shelf." Also, the books that are being pulled for sexual content, they do not have to be pulled for other reasons. If there is a challenge, it should be pulled within five days, but if it's a challenge for another reason, it needs to stay on the shelf until a district committee has made that determination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes public comment. I'm sure there'll be discussion on everything you all just mentioned during the workshop today. I'm pretty positive of it. So we'll start with item number one, which is CRI and the update, internal audit update. So come on up. I believe, Mark, did you have everything up here for you?
Yeah.
Perfect.
You can just tell me what you want to open.
If we start with the point of sale, MTC point of sale. Now you just scroll through. Good morning, everyone. See you.
Morning.
So I'm going to go over each, the individual report. I'll talk about the scope of it, a little bit background, and then if you have questions about any of the observations or the report, then I can address those for each report, and then we'll move on to the next one. So the first one we have is the MTC point of sale. This MTC audit and the next one, we looked at functions at MTC that are unique to MTC and not at other functions throughout the school district, such as when we did the HR audit, we might have selected employees at MTC as part of that audit. Or if we looked at purchasing, there might have been some purchasing items through MTC where this is what's unique at MTC in these two audits, and this is the point of sale process. So at MTC, they use a system called Counterpoint. That is at their terminals at the bookstore there, which they sell uniforms, shirts, other materials that are needed by students, the cosmetology program where they offer services that are provided by students there as part of their curriculum, and then the café, which provides meals and the food is prepared by students there. So we looked at the Counterpoint system, and we looked at the front end piece, how cash is handled or receipts are taken, as well as the back end, which is processing that and transferring that information from Counterpoint into the FSCM PeopleSoft system. So in there, we looked at their policies, procedures, the cash controls, how they record sales, deposits that are made from those sales, their inventory control specifically in the bookstore, reconciliation process that they perform daily and monthly, as well as the system access within the Counterpoint system. We had one low finding as it relates to the bookstore inventory to implement some kind of cycle count or regular process with that. We didn't have any other observations or exceptions in that audit. Does anyone have any questions about the point of sale? Yeah, that one right there. Yep, the one right above it. So financial aid, MTC students can apply and receive financial aid to help them with tuition at the school. So when we looked at this audit, looked at the scope of it, we tried to identify what are the types of financial aid from a dollar amount, as well as when was the last time maybe some of these programs or different grants received an audit outside of internal, either external agency or part of the external audit piece that's done with the Act for. In that, we looked at it, and really the Pell Grants was the main one that we focused on, mainly from a dollar standpoint, and the amount of risk it provides from determining the amount of aid a student should receive, dispersing the aid, monitoring academic performance and attendance, as well as ensuring if a student didn't withdrew from the school, if there needed to be any kind of funds returned by the student. So we spent, the focus of that audit was on the Pell Grant process. So we looked at policies and procedures, awarding, distributing, student withdrawals, and the reconciliation process that's required by statute. We looked at guidance given to students on completing financial aid applications, as well as the monitoring that takes place throughout the academic year. We looked at separation of duties to make sure that aid was handled by one department where payments by students or refunds was handled by a different department. And then we also looked at, since the campus solutions models unique to MTC, to make sure that the financial aid process was utilizing all the features, or if there was opportunities for them to use other features in PeopleSoft to help with the grant process or financial aid. Most of the recommendations we have is they had really robust and good procedures on, that reflect statute, and as well as job aids in PeopleSoft, but it was really that gap in between the two on how are you monitoring, or how are you making sure that you're complying with the procedures to then operate those in PeopleSoft? And that's where most of the recommendations kind of aim at, as well as a recommendation that they work with the business analyst at MTC to see if there's some efficiencies or some additional utilization they could use in the PeopleSoft system for financial aid.
Any questions? Yeah.
Could you talk a minute about when a, first of all, why money has to be refunded, back to MTC? What safeguards are in place, other than, you know, you can have two different departments, but if I say you owe this much back, and Chad works in the other department, you know, how can you keep someone like Chad going and saying, "Oh, you owe a refund"? Because I think we did get in trouble on that once before. Yep.
So from a Pell Grant, the only time a student would owe any funds back is if they withdraw, and they've completed less than 61% of the class hours. At that point, it would be then prorated the amount that if they received additional. So if a student comes up at the beginning of the school year and submits, pays $4,000, and it's determined that they get $4,000 in grant money, they've already paid, the student is entitled to a refund, as long as it covers all the tuition, once the grant money comes in. If the student received that money, and then it's determined that they only completed 40%, a calculation's done, and they might owe a prorated $2,000 back because they got a check cut to them. At that point, the Financial Services asks the financial aid department to perform the calculation, and Financial Services makes the request to the student, tells them they owe the money, and that's how it's done. It could be circumvented if a student's told they owe money and never really owe it, but if a student completes the entire, or gets past the 61, they should never owe any money back if they got the money refunded to them, or it was additional amount. So what we did was make sure that there's communication to students that you do not pay money back to the financial aid office. It was updated in the student handbook, so we made sure that was in there. And then for this upcoming school year, I know they're putting some additional information in a form that the student fills out, but that was done to make sure that students are aware that you do not need to provide funds back, and if you do, it has to go through Financial Services. It does not come to financial aid.
Do we have posters or anything around to just kind of drive that point home?
I'm not, I did not see any posters or drafts, so.
So it's in the student handbook.
But it's in the student handbook that they have to sign, so.
So, or maybe Dr. Wyson even, what are the procedures to, like I see some of these are medium risk here, Pell Grant reconciliations and other areas, what's the procedure to look at the problem, come up with a solution, implement the solution, and then get feedback to make sure that the solution is working, so to speak?
So we would do that in the post-audit review, so we give some time for things to get implemented, and then we'd go back, we'd work with the department to see if, have things been implemented so that we could test it, and then see if there's enough time given so that we can look at a good sample size that they've done. So, and they'll talk, like I talked with the financial aid coordinator about the reconciliation. She had some kind of questions on, you know, further clarification or things to help her with, you know, what would be expected in a reconciliation, or what you'd expect to see. So they're, I know they're working on these and implementing them, but it'd be a post-audit review that we have built in the audit program. Usually, we try to go enough time, usually it's probably six months to 12 months, depending on what needs to be addressed and give it time to work.
But Dr. Wyson, does Mr. Wagner have a procedure for dealing with these discrepancies? And I don't know if you know, I'm just, I'm thinking about when you, when an Air Force Inspector General comes and they find discrepancies, there's a chart set up, and it's, here's the problem, here's the recommended solution, here's the timeframe, here's the outcome, and it gets reported back to the commander, so I'm kind of wondering if that, something like that exists, or?
Certainly, and I think the, you know, the work to be done, right, is done by, you know, very competent people lower in the organization, but ultimately, it's Mr. Wagner and then Dr. Ganzmer's responsibility to ensure that CRI doesn't have to come back to the Board and say, "Our concerns were not addressed."
Just to point out that every audit report that CRI does, they have what they call action plans, and just what you're talking about, you know, where it says what needs to be done based on the report, and who's responsible, and the date, and then the audit committee tracks that along with, you know, CRI and the audit committee meeting. So it's there, and it's been very effective, so.
Great, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
That's it for that one?
So contract compliance really looks at after the purchasing function, you approve a vendor, have them come on, is how are they complying with the provisions in the contract? Are they meeting requirements? Are they billing correctly? So what we did was, we took three contracts to perform detailed testing on that, but we looked at the whole population of contracts to start to get that population, and then select those three contracts. And doing that, we did find at the beginning, and we have that as one of the recommendations, not everything that was labeled or provided in the report out of PeopleSoft was entered with a contract number, so that was one of the recommendations in there, to make sure that we have a good population. So I know some procedures and some processes are being put in place to make sure everything makes it in as a contract number in there. The PO was in there, but the contract number was not. But once we select it, we worked with the Audit Committee Chair at the time, Dr. Agruzo, to talk about what kind of contracts we want to select. We looked at dollar amount, we got some feedback from her, and we talked to another Audit Committee member liaison. We tried to pick contracts that kind of varied. We had one contract that was based on a lump sum dollar amount every month that was paid to the vendor. We had one that was billed based on services, and then we had one that was done through a maintenance RFP type one that we looked at as well for HVAC. So we did detailed testing on those, we looked at provisions, we looked at what they should be charging, what kind of contractors they should be providing with certifications, hiring processes on those, and background checks, and for each one of those, we performed those detailed testing and had recommendations for each one of those, as well as that global recommendation from a, ensuring that contract numbers made it into PeopleSoft so that contract totals can be monitored as part of the contract compliance process. So if anyone has any questions on the individual contracts we looked at, or the process that we did.
Any questions for the Board?
Just, go ahead, Mr. Chatham, go ahead.
So have you looked at these areas before in previous audits, or is this kind of the first time that you've looked at these areas at MTC? Is it, like, the areas that you're talking about?
In the contract?
Well, like, Centerstone contract language?
Yeah, so that's the first time we dove into these individual contracts and performed the review we did. So we looked at the contract, we talked with the contract owner about how are they monitoring the contract, how are they, when they're getting invoice and billed, what are they doing to make sure that the services you're being provided are there? Because, you know, when you're getting a billing for one location or a certain service, it's a lot easier than if those billing is coming in from five different schools, or 10 different schools. So we wanted to make sure, like, on that Centerstone one, that we picked a contract that was kind of like that. But yes, the first time we dove into detail on each one of these contracts.
But I mean, in looking at all of the reports that you've given us, it seems like there are a lot of areas that are yellow, they're moderate. So what is your perception about why there are so many areas that are kind of highlighted in yellow? Is it because people need more education on laws, processes, and rules so that they can be in compliance? Or what do you, why do you think there are so many areas that are yellow?
And really, the colors we use are trying to prioritize how quickly you need to fix something. If we went in, it's, you know, critical, that's something that you need to fix right away because it's a significant control weakness and could lead to loss or a significant risk reputation or regulatory risk. You know, we have high, and then I think when we get to...
Move to the table so you can see.
Yeah, to the tables, kind of, right here.
There you go.
Yep, it's really, it's really how quickly management should address those items. So, you know, when I look at moderate, it's not that, you know, it's still something that needs to be addressed and fixed, but not to the point where you're going to have a complete breakdown in the process or control, and you're going to have significant loss there. And we try to look at the audit as a whole, you know, what's really the objective, and can you still achieve what you need to in that area without having significant impact in there? So I don't really look at it as having as much issues, and I think each item is its own kind of thing, what needs to be done, rather than entirely piece of it, especially the contracts. Each one's unique, unique in there, so.
So I guess my, but my question is, if you know these things, and you find out these things, and in theory, you're not the experts, you're reading documentation and laws and rules, and seeing if the people who do that job are in compliance with it, why is it that there are so many areas that are highlighted as moderate risk, which is, "Such an issue would be expected to receive correction action from management, must be completed within 90 days of the final audit report"? Why are there so many areas that are at high risk? And trying to find the underlying reason for that. Is it, like I said, is it because people in those jobs lack experience, they need more education and training to do their jobs? Because in reading some of the reports, it appears that people are not, maybe they don't understand kind of the finer rules that go along with their job, or what some of the legal requirements are, or maybe they're not staffed enough, maybe they're overwhelmed with work. I mean, I'm trying to have an understanding from your perception of why there are so many areas that are moderate.
Those are at moderate, so there are none at high.
Right.
And, you know, it's just individual items that they need to either improve a control on. If it raised to the level that it was high enough or insignificant, or it needed immediate management attention, we've... If it raised to the level that it was high enough or insignificant, or it needed immediate management attention, we've had the conversation before with either the superintendent or deputy superintendent or, uh, the person over the, the area, but we, I don't feel from what we did, there was anything significant. And you'll have audits where you'll have multiple findings and it's not, doesn't mean that there's anything someone's doing wrong or that they need. It's just certain areas that we're diving into and looking for certain controls, cause we have the experience and the, um, ability to identify those that some people don't have that, um, consistently.
Let me step in for just a second and just maybe give a little bit more background. So you might notice that when we did this contract compliance, it didn't include construction, cause we've already done construction. When you look at construction, it's all in one area, one department. They all know what they're looking for. When you get into these type of contracts, they're running through different departments and different areas of the school district. Which is one reason why we made the, um, suggestion at the beginning that all of these need to run through purchasing so that they're assigned the number in PeopleSoft so that the purchasing, purchasing department can at least be aware of all the contracts that are out there. So the second thing is then, then you've got all these other contracts going through other departments in the district. It's not like the construction area where they're all specialized and that that's what they're doing. So I think overall what needs to happen with contracts when they come through is that they need to be, all we did was, we read the contract. Okay, so you gotta read the contract and it's a good idea to set up a checklist and kind of go through and hey, when, when they bill us, these are the things we need to look for to make sure that they're in compliance before we say we're okay to bill it. And so really all we found in looking at these three contracts, and we picked different contracts from different areas to kind of illustrate that point. Because it's not that you should focus on these three contracts. Overall, we need to be looking at all the contracts and, and making sure that there's a checklist and that there's, there's things we're looking at. And each contract is different, so you're not gonna have a uniform checklist.
Right.
It's not just gonna be A, B, C, D, E on every single contract, cause everything is different. So it really just takes someone reading through the contract and, and understanding. And it's all spelled out pretty much in the contracts. And if the contracts aren't clear, then, then they need to be clarified. You need to go back to the vendor and clarify those points. So, so that's really, that's really the point of this is really, again, just to kind of help elevate all the areas so that everybody's looking at the contracts just a little more closely. But we didn't find anything, what Mark's trying to say, we didn't find anything overall that's critical or scary, that huge mistakes are happening. It's nothing like that. It's just that, hey, we can tweak this and we can be a little better.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand is that-
Does that make more sense?
Yes, to some degree, what you said is that, what I think I heard you say is that it might be a good idea to set up checklists for different types of contracts or-
That's how I would do it, but obviously the district can decide how they want to do it. But that's me, cause I'm an auditor, so I like to have my, you know, I like to have everything down and I like to go through it. So that's how I would do it. I would set up some kind of a, a summary, but, um, this has been, this has been discussed and so I'm sure that they're working on putting it, something in place. And we will, when we do our post audit reviews, we'll look at these contracts and then maybe pull one or two others since to see if changes are being made overall.
And the district does have a checklist that when they submit the invoice from the vendor and it was implemented based on a, a state recommendation from an audit where it, it has, you know, does the, the pricing agree? Did you get the services? So it's a general checklist that has all that and part of our testing, we look at 30 other contracts and make sure that checklist was done. Um, so that's completed. It's however, behind that, you know, another layer of, you know, is it, are you, when it says is it pricing right or are you getting the services? What are some additional things you're gonna get? And that's part of one of the recommendations was in here was for whoever fills out that checklist to at least list in there, we also, you know, received, uh, you know, individual time cards from the therapist. Or you received, you know, these additional things to help, say, when you said we're priced right, well, what did you look at? Or when you got the services, what did you see? So that was part of one of the other recommendations was to maybe on that checklist, at least name the additional things that you received to verify, um, that the services-
They need to add the specifics, cause they start with a general checklist. They just need to add some specifics, cause each contract is different.
And that's the hard part is yeah, having, you want to at least have something uniform that people could use, but at the same time, you know, they, they could at least supplement it with additional things that they need to get from, you know, from the vendor. So.
Okay, also just, I'm again, coming from a background of, you know, like military aviation and maintenance where things need to be done right, uh, a report like this with a bunch of, I, I know they're not red areas where the planes are gonna fall out of the sky, but if, if you had a bunch of yellow areas where there were safety issues, you know, well, it's not gonna fall out of the sky. However, if you keep doing it this way, you might cause an issue that will cause the plane to fall out of the sky, which is kind of how I read that. Such an issue would be expected to receive, you know, it's not gonna happen now, but if we keep doing it this way, it's, it could potentially cause a problem. I, I would just like to feel assured that there's a process for improvement. And Miss Foreman did talk about that. Uh, but it's at a very high level and I like your checklist.
This will follow the same, this will follow the same process that every internal audit does. We will, we have, what we refer to it as an exception tracker. We do discuss it with the audit committee and bring them up to date. So as the district gets their corrective action plans actually in place and then they've been in place for a period of time, we come back and test. So.
And, and one other thought that I have too is that, you know, we've been doing, when I say we, the Manatee County School District has been doing this for decades and so how did we, it's not like we set up MTC last year and this is new and we're kind of getting our feet wet and understanding the processes, how, how is it that we do have so many areas that are at moderate risk in our financial world over at MTC?
So this isn't just MTC. This, this is the school district, overall. So this one is not just MTC.
That's true. You're, I, I'm thinking of the previous report, cause there were some-
The two previous were MTC specifics.
How did we get there? I mean, overall, what is your, cause like I said, we haven't, it's not like we set this up last year.
There is a comprehensive risk assessment that is done at the beginning. So the last time we did a proposal, we did a comprehensive risk assessment and looked at areas that, um, were of higher risk that we should look at. MTC was something that, as an example, MTC was something that we had not looked at um, in several years. So even though we felt like it was, it was a lower risk, it was something we hadn't looked at. And there were these two areas which we looked at, the point of sale system and the financial aid, that's different from the rest of the school district. The rest of the school district isn't dealing with that.
Right.
Just MTC. So that's why we, that's how that came up. That's why we do the five-year comprehensive risk assessments and that will be done, um, in the next year. A comprehensive risk assessment, which then helps us to look at how we bring in the next audits and what we're looking at. And that's an audit plan that is developed with the audit committee. And then it is reconsidered every year. Because different things happen. So, um, for example, we had done the risk assessment and then 2020 happened. Um, the CFO changed. That's when Tim came in. Um, and everybody was at home, nobody was here. And, uh, the, the COVID money started coming in, the care company, so. So it changed a lot of, of what we might've needed to look at, so we kind of remade some revisions at that point in time. Um, you know, that's why we were, and, um, it was alluded to by, um, Jim Daniels when he spoke the other day that a lot, he said a lot of changes have been made. Well, we've got um, several new committee board members. We've got a new superintendent, we've got new deputy superintendents. They may have different areas of concern or risk and that's part of the risk assessment. It's part of talking to those people and understanding where the risks are and what we need to look at. And so that is something that will actually be happening at early 2024. We will do a, not a full five-year risk assessment, but we will revise the annual risk assessment. We will be talking, we will be reaching out and talking, we will reach out and try to talk to every board member. I think last year, not everyone returned our calls. So hopefully this year, you'll be watching for it, cause you know who we're, who we are and what it's about. So we want to talk to you. We want to hear where your concerns are. We will talk to, um, Dr. Weisong, we will talk to all the deputy superintendents, we will talk to department heads. It's a fairly comprehensive thing. And, and that helps us to come back to the audit committee and talk about an audit plan for 24, 25. And we start doing that this spring, cause we have to start getting ready.
So Dr. Weisong, you, there are a lot of quote unquote, yellow lights flashing in these reports, but you've been doing this a long time with it. Are you concerned about the number of, my analogy of a lot of yellow lights flashing? Are you, are you, you know?
Well, well, obviously we, we would love to have an audit firm come and stand up and say, everything is perfect, right? I mean, that, that, that's always the goal. Um, I think that, um, you know, again, I think there's a, a process in place to address these, um, and, and to work through that. Um, I, there has been a lot of personnel turnover and, and that's always important. Um, and, um, you know, we're already looking at some things that, again, that the deputies and I are seeing that, that we want to strengthen. And that's really what this is, right? This is an opportunity to get stronger as an organization. So we have a personnel work group right now looking at all of our electronic document flow processes to be sure that everybody who needs to be looking at a specific process is included, that we're not missing anybody and that each person who's in those processes knows what their specific role is. Um, so that's a kind of a higher level example um, of something that we've initiated just based on, you know, our experience, um, you know, in these roles, these first few months. So, um, you know, so, so those, those processes are, are in place certainly. Um, although CRI is the board's audit firm, if they have a concern that a department or a team isn't taking a recommendation seriously, I hope to have the opportunity to remedy that before they would come back to you and say the district staff is not being cooperative, you know? Um, the other part of that I'll just mention is, um, I, I'm working through and, and meeting with a number of people one-on-one at all different levels of the organization, great people in this building who, who are doing a lot of this critical work. Um, and, um, trying to gather information about, um, you know, how our systems are either helping or inhibiting their work. Um, whether we are correctly staffed, um, at, 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 within departments. Um, and, um, you know, I think, I think we have some cases where people are working really long hours to try to keep up with the volume of work that's consistent with a 1.3 billion dollar organization that has 60 plus different sites. And so, you know, when we talk about what should the size and scope of the central office be, some people say, well, you know, it should be, you know, really small and not, and, and, and not top-heavy and, and departments should be, you know, small in size. Well, the trade-off for that is time to document processes and, and do business analysis. And so I think that, that part of that process of, of, of even me personally meeting with some of the folks doing this work i- i- is to try to figure out, um, you know, do we have the right number of people looking at all of this?
That's good. And, you know, obviously we want audits to find things to help us be better. It just seems like in all, in these three reports, there are a lot of yellow lights. And I'm just bringing that to our attention and having a discussion about, I want things to get better, so.
I just want to add one thing. I want to say that the district staff have always been very responsive
Sure.
to our comments and getting their corrective action plans. I want you to know that. They, they really have. We've not had an issue with that. Um, and also just a reminder that, yes, we, we are your internal audit team. We are not the external auditors. We're internal auditors. We go in pretty granular. The external audit would, would not bring up this stuff. They would never see it. Cause that's not what an external audit is about. So they're two different things. Our whole purpose is to work with the school board and work with the district just to help find improvements. So if we were coming back and everything was clean, you probably wouldn't need us.
Well, that's true.
Which could be good. That could be good, right? But, um, there's just always little things that we can do to improve.
Right.
Every entity is that way. We all are that way personally. So that's why we're here. That's why we're here. So we're very, very granular. So a lot of these things would not come up in an external audit at all. I would be surprised if anything Mark talked about today came up in an external audit. Because it is that small.
Well, what Dr. Weisong said is, you know, process of, process of being looked at and do we have the right? Like, it's what I was saying before, I'm not talking about people that aren't doing their job. It's more like our people, do we have the right personnel, as Dr. Weisong said, in the right positions to handle the amount of work that there is? Or do people need a little more training on the rules and the regulations so they actually know what to work for? I mean, there's, you know, there's three types of knowledge in the world, right? There's knowledge we know, like I know how to speak English. Knowledge I know that I don't know. I don't know how to speak Chinese. And then there's knowledge that we don't know that we don't know. And that's maybe where we get ourselves in trouble here, is people think they're doing their job, but turns out that they're not knowledgeable enough about the rules, the laws, whatever they are, and so things get overlooked and that's another area for improvement. Do, can we provide more training and education to people in these positions? So. That's the discussion I wanted to have.
I just want to make sure, I think there's a dis- there's a distinction to me between like the colors and, and that sort of thing. I know there's some, there's some yellow on here, but, um, I just want to make sure that it's not like are these systems are completely backwards and everything's crazy. Um, I think that from what I've read is you're providing, here's things where we can do some improvement, which is great. There's always needs to be improvement. But it's not like we're legally doing something wrong, financially doing something wrong, et cetera, right? I mean, otherwise it'd be a dark red or whatever the-
Yeah, like, like when I, like the MTC financial aid is, you know, they're calculating the, the financial aid for the students properly. They're monitoring it, dispersing it properly. You know, those are the significant pieces of that. And the remaining ones are like, how can you get better and have more guidance and consistency with it? And really the colors, like I said, are more, how do you prioritize getting thing and how soon should you address those? Cause you don't want it to sit out there and linger, um, you know, for a period of time. So that's kind of, we use that as, you know, relative or compared, you know, if you did see a higher critical, well, that really is something that, you know, needs to be addressed.
Doing something right.
You need to do. So that's kind of how we, we handle those. And I know from when I started working with the district five years ago, the reports probably would have been more lit up, but they've made a really good effort. And like I said, working with management on, on really taking serious the recommendations and trying to address the things, um, that they need to do. So, um, we've seen a big improvement over the last five years or so.
I, I know Ms. Spray had something too.
Yeah.
Do you still have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, mine was more on a low level here. The ESS substitute, you did a 15 test, did a testing of 15 subs selected and two did not have ESS documents uh, to support their educational requirements to be, yeah. One did provide and then when you look at that chart of high risk and low, that, and you're given so many days, like 120 days to me for that low risk category for this, I think, I think that should have been a little more of a moderate because, um, cause the pay scale is different. From what I'm reading of your assessment, this level on, with this documentation, uh, or bachelor's is at one rate and then another one is a, at a different rate. So to me, I mean, and, and again to your chart, the, uh, such issues did not warrant immediate attention, but requires corrective action by management and must be completed within 120 days of final audit. So to me, that was just one thing that popped up to me. And then the, uh, parts, invoice and parts of a subcontractor, uh, kind of my field. Mr. Tatum might have flown the planes, but I might have bought the parts.
Right.
Yeah, so, um, so you, you looks, it looks like you pulled 22 invoices and, and I understand internal auditors, they come in and they look at something they want to, they see financials. They see, let me look at this, uh, this vendor. I want to see 22 invoices from this vendor and they're random. Am I correct? They're just random, whatever.
Haphazard is a better-
Haphazard, right. Pull this, pull that one, pull this one. Okay, uh, I've had to go on through boxes to pull files before, so I understand. And six of them, uh, totaling 231,000. There were some that were not giving us, uh, discounts is what I'm looking at basically for parts. And then two did not require terms and conditions. So, that one there, again, according to your chart, that they have 90 days to fix that. So, are we saying that the district is purchasing, is going to go back and say, "Hey, the auditors found this. You need to adjust that invoice." So, then you go back and confirm that, or does staff go back and confirm that they adjusted their invoice?
I just talked to Todd Hanson.
Oh, hi!
And they actually just got, that vendor was bought out. So, they actually just got the invoices yesterday?
It was this morning.
This morning.
Oh, well, see, there you go.
So, we could take a look at that, on that one.
So, would it change this?
No, it would just be addressing one of the recommendations that they need to get the invoice.
And, and I'm just, just because we all have different backgrounds. I worked at a place where we were billed for linens, and the company would say, "I picked up 42 tablecloths, and they're charged $2 apiece for cleaning." And the math was always wrong, so, and I'm talking invoices long. I had, I calculated every number to make sure it was right, and I altered and told them, "Your invoice is wrong. Sign off on it because I'm not going to pay it until you sign off on it that I corrected your math." So, that's old school, by the way. Old school, you're doing things. So, I would say that the, I guess we're giving 30 days for every level here. Well, one, six, yeah, everything, you're bumping it up just 30 days. So, even though it's a low thing, it's still a fine. You know, and thank goodness, we don't have a lot of, it's improvement, so.
And really, the days are kind of like, you know, it's not hard and fast. Sometimes the recommendation is there, but to address it, when you start looking into it, might take longer, you know? But at least if they're addressing what the, it is at the moment in the management response, and then they could stop, you know, stop the bleeding or stop, you know, if it's that significant going on, but, you know, it's, we try to give them enough time that we could come back and make sure it's in place, but it's not, we don't do like a hard, fast, you know? If it's not done, it's, you know, you violated the, the response. It's just, it's really there for them to, to prioritize.
As a guideline.
Yeah, especially if they have multiple ones, you know, "What should we address first?" You know, second, third.
Five years ago, there were so many, they couldn't address them.
I know. I remember watching a lot of that.
So...
So, the criticals and the high, that would be something you would bring to the board's attention, pretty fast.
We bring all of them to your attention.
Right, right.
As soon as you get us on the schedule for a workshop.
Well, I, no, I'm saying if there is something, I'm saying I don't, if there's a critical or a very high, a lot of high stuff, I wouldn't want to wait to just be on the, get it on the agenda. I would want to know through the staff.
I would probably hear about it because Rachel would be aware.
Rachel would be letting us know, okay.
And if we needed to talk to Dr. Weisong about it, we would. So, I mean, the district, it would definitely be elevated. All of our reports, when we get them into draft and we have our recommendations for any exceptions, we meet with not only the team that we were talking to at the district, whichever department is, but it also goes by Rachel, or Ms. Sellers, I should say. And so, it goes through her, and she looks at it, and we talk about it, you know, talk about it as well. So, she's always made aware
Okay.
of the finding, at least since she's been here. Yeah. So, all of the...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that up, that, yeah, if anything ever came up like that, that we're alerted.
Oh, absolutely.
Pretty fast, and it's, we don't wait till it's on a workshop agenda kind of thing. So, I just, that's all I had right there. Thank you.
And I don't even want, I mean, we should, it should be the district staff that's alerted first because you're the one doing the job.
Right.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So, you know, and I know you would and do.
Yeah, a couple of things. The internal audit, when things go wrong, okay, it's either we don't have the systems in place, okay, and that's your recommendation, or the system's there, procedures are there, but people aren't following it, okay? Would you, if you had to, I'm going to put you on the spot here. If you had to give a percentage, how much of it is people not following it? How much of it is systems?
Wow, Ms. Foreman.
I'd say it's most, it would be probably people not following at this point.
Which is one of the reasons why you see a lot of our documentation, a lot of our recommendations are documentation. You've, I've heard you mentioned several times today, and we've mentioned it too, about the turnover. So, if, you know, if Ms. Foreman was responsible for the contract compliance and looking at it, and she leaves, and Ms. Spray takes over, if, if it's not documented what the processes are, if there's not a checklist that has the specifics related to the contract, are you going to go through? And how many contracts are here in the district? Could you imagine, like, trying to get familiar with all of those contracts and making sure every billing is in compliance? So, that's why the documentation is so important. And that's why the checklist, the general checklist that they use is great, let's add some specifics to it, is the recommendation. Because it's the little things, it's little things that are being missed. So, I would call that more documentation than processes. Now, we did suggest in the financial aid audit for MTC that they work with the business analysts to see, because there's still some things that they're doing manually that maybe they could get out of the PeopleSoft system that would help them be more efficient. And so, we're not sure if that's possible. The staff we were talking to weren't sure, but they would sure like to know. They were like, "Yeah, that's a great idea. Let's see if it'll work." So, that's why we, so you're right. If we see it's a system possibility, we'll recommend that. If it's, a lot of times, though, honestly, it's, it's documentation and following the processes. And you got a lot of turnover right now. It's that way for everyone. It's just...
Maybe empty positions.
We're at right now, yeah.
Maybe empty positions that people are doing to me.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And I do want to point out that if you came in with no findings, you would highly question whether you're doing your job, you know? I mean, so, it, you know?
We'd be auditing the auditors.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you guys maybe would be auditing us. I mean, and that's what I'm saying, because at the external audit level, because of where they audit, they audit up here, it would not be unusual not to have a material weakness or significant deficiency communicated. Because overall, I think the district's processes work well materially for the financials. We get very granular. We're very, I mean, if you looked at the POS, the MTC POS, one of the findings was about, it was a $1,200 impact to inventory. I know you don't want to see that, but it's $1,200. How many millions are running through? So, we get very, very granular, looking for improvements. And the reason why we do that is exactly as all of you have commented, is that, yeah, okay, right now, it's not significant, but it could become significant. And then you don't want that lifted out by your external auditors. So, that, that's the purpose of why we're here. We are here to help, trying to make things better. We're part of the team.
And I also want to point out, our role in this is that the five-year comprehensive plan assessment or risk assessment comes to the board. So, we have, we have an opportunity to input before, while they're working on it, not only the five-year, but also every year when they update the annual risk assessment. And so, we have an obligation to participate in that, okay?
And we want you to participate. We, we want to hear what you're saying.
And then also, I would recommend, I mean, this is, they are our auditors, and the audit committee is our committee, and I, it's more than recommend, but I urge each of us to, if you can't go to an audit committee meeting where some of these things that you're asking about are discussed, you will see the action plans, you will see the exception tracker. If you can't go, at least listen to the audio. And then if you want to see the, and we get, we get copied with all of the, the documents, you know, the, the backup. So, you can follow the exception trackers, the action plans, just by looking at the detail in the email. It's great reading. It's a lot of fun. So, but, but no, I, I...
It's not bedtime reading.
Huh?
It's not bedtime. Very exciting.
No, it keeps me awake. Sometimes, used, used to really keep me awake, but things are better. And I'm, I'm proud of the district, and I'm proud of the audit committee.
Thank you. Any, anything else from you all? I'm sorry, any other questions? Does anybody, anything from you all? Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah. You as well. All right, brings us up to item number two, policy updates amendments.
Right. Hello, everybody. Good morning.
Morning.
Let's see here. We are gonna maybe take care of some of these, hopefully easier policy edits, and then we'll work our way through the list, so...
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah.
Can I jump in just before you?
Yes, you're the superintendent, of course.
Just for the, because, just for some context setting, and we talked about this briefly, board members, on, on Tuesday evening, but for maybe folks that just see this workshop, to provide some context, again, this is a, a set of policies that we're bringing to you for discussion based on, again, the, the senior leadership team's first six months and, and things that we're seeing that are, that are opportunities to, again, strengthen processes. And, and so, this is a little different because these are not, you know, statutory in nature where we're copying and pasting language. And, and so, this is, you know, if there are, you know, suggestions or, you know, word changes or whatever, we, you know, we're, we're certainly open to all of that. Some of these, as Mr. Chapman started to say, are, are minor. I think some of them are, you know, bigger discussions. But, you know, we, we wanted to put these in front of you and, and kind of explain the why and, and what we're thinking and, and get your feedback. So, that, that's really the, the purpose of, of these eight. I think from a timing perspective, if, if you decide to support these or re-modify them or whatever, if we can, you know, get them approved mid-January, in some cases, that, that helps us a lot with planning for 24, 25. So, just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong. And, and these set of policies you, the board, approved to advertise on Tuesday, they are now out for public comment, for those listening to this board meeting. And so, the public will find these policies for review on our, on our website, and then they can make comments and so on. And then we'll have a public hearing on these policies when we come back on January 16th, at your board meeting on January 16th, and then make any final edits and, and approve them, hopefully. So, we thought we, we would take the first one, the travel and per diem, 6550, policy, and then, and then perhaps the remote work policies, and then the 8325 receipt of legal documents by district employees policy. Maybe do those, and then, and then, and then we've, we've got the other three. So, 6550, travel and per diem, you'll see in kind of that section B is where the edit is. And again, like Superintendent said, they're in purple, so a reminder that we, we do, we have three colors when we edit the policies. So, there's, there's red and green, which is the Neola statutory changes, and then purple means that the district has made these changes. So, this is language that we're going to add to this, to this policy. So, really, the reason for this edit is to kind of give the board, the superintendent and deputy superintendent, the flexibility to approve overnight travel expenses on a, on a, you know, case-by-case basis when situations arise where, where in this out-of-county travel provision. I'll give you an example. Sometimes we've got, many of you go to, now, you have a different policy. This is for district employees. But, you know, many times, there's conferences in Tampa, which makes sense. Well, the way you look at a, at a map mile calculator, sometimes that conference is 49 miles away from the, from your district office or 51 miles away, and, and depending on where, where you work in the district, it, it, it kind of plays around with that 50-mile thing in this pos, in this policy, which is not really giving the flexibility for our team when they, when there's quality professional development going on or a conference or things that are, happen to be, you know, outside of our county when it, when it comes to authorizing travel per diem. So, this provision that we've added in there gives the flexibility for the board, the superintendent and deputy superintendent, to approve, again, on a case-by-case basis, those situations that may arise and that they feel are important for our team to, to go to. So, that's, that's where that edit is, and I'll, maybe I'll stop there if, if anybody has any additions or questions about that edit.
Can you get MapQuest out of, out of number A?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't even know, that's, is that even around?
I don't know.
We've got new MapQuest everywhere.
Is that even a UR? I don't even know if that's a site.
Yeah, we got that rid of that.
We got rid of that a lot of places.
Well, yeah, we added...
No, it's called MapQuest.
Yeah, we added, we added Mileage Chart Calculator or MapQuest, so...
Yeah.
But we can get rid of MapQuest, okay? We'll make that edit. Yeah, we'll make that.
Oh, you, do you still use MapQuest? Wow.
Wow.
You can't get rid of it. She needs it.
Well, I guess then don't get, I mean, I didn't even know it was around.
Well, then you would have to put in Google Maps.
I didn't even know it was around.
Yeah.
MapQuest, Google Maps, there's...
I would just use any map, yeah, it's fine.
I think we, we can just modify that to be generic, as opposed to a specific brand, right?
I didn't even know MapQuest was around anymore. That's funny. I mean, we had to print it out. Go ahead.
So, who would approve? Can the superintendent approve his own travel with this policy? Like, let's say it was 37.69 miles. Because how far, like, how far is it from here to the, I bet it's less than 50 miles from here to the Grand Hyatt up in Tampa?
Right.
And so...
It's, actually, it's, it's almost on the dot. It's, it's either 49-point-something or 50-point-something, and it's kind of like...
Let's say it was 40, it's less than 50 miles, and he, he needs to go to a conference or something, and we don't want him, you know, having to drive down 275 every day and an hour and a half, two hours of his time, but it's, which he did for this last conference. So, who, who will be able to approve? Can we approve? Would you bring it to?
It says the board.
I think his travels...
Right, okay.
So, we, we crafted this, this language so that if, again, almost every employee in this organization rolls up to one of the three deputy superintendents, so the notion is if there's a unique circumstance at a school, and, and this actually emerged from that, you know, again, we, on the map, you can have a site that's 48 miles away, but you have a, a teacher that is arriving at a conference at 7:00 a.m. and leaving that site at 9:00 p.m., only to have to go back there the next day. That's, you know, that's the kind of exception we're talking about. Then I would be the person looking at the travel of the deputy superintendents, and then if it were me, it would come to the board for approval. So, that, that was why we did that structure.
And we didn't have that, we don't have, we don't currently have that flexibility, and that is why for this conference, you were, you were driving back and forth.
Right, so we, so, again, a, a different issue came to me, and we talked about this, and there was not flexibility in the policy. And, and then I pointed out to the group that that meant I could not stay at the conference that, at the FADZFSBA. So, I did go back and forth, which was fine. I'm much more concerned, again, about the, you know, a, a teacher, you know, some of these pieces, again, you've got teachers supervising students who are going for, you know, part of a day, but they might be there, you know, for an extended period of time. And so, we, we, I, I just want to be sure we're making good decisions for our employees as opposed to letting a MAP program make the decision.
Yeah, no, I'm all in favor of the flexibility. The traffic around here is, you know, asking people to drive, like, the conference, I suppose around four or five o'clock, you were heading out and into the Tampa traffic between five and seven, trying to get yourself home, hour and a half or two hours of your time. Yeah, I'm, yeah, great, let's have some. I was just curious about who's going to be able to, so if you wanted to do this less than 50 miles, you would bring it to the board? And then, and then everybody else is somehow, some... and then, and then everybody else is somehow, some supervisor in the, either you or the deputies make, great, I think that's good flexibility, so. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll, we'll go to the next one here, if I can, uh, figure this system out. Boy. No, that didn't work. Well...
You probably close that one, too.
Yeah, let's talk about it while we... Oh, I see.
Yeah, just close it all out.
Okay, here we go. Next one is, uh, the remote work, uh, policies. Um, so this is the fifteen-hundred, thirty-five-hundred, and forty-five-hundred, which I don't see on here. Um... Uh, okay, but, um, this, um, uh, do you all have fifteen-hundred, thirty-five-hundred, forty-five-hundred in front of you? So, these, and, and the, and the edits on these three po- policies are, are identical, um, and this, again, and, and I'll let the superintendent chime in, um, we don't have a remote work policy in this school district. So, these would be new policies, uh, a new policy added to the district. Um, and, and I'll let the superintendent explain why, um, he and the leadership team felt that this was important to add, uh, uh, to the, to the, to our system.
So, um, and, and this actually kind of links back to the, the last discussion, um, regarding, you know, audit reports and, you know, in, in, in the process of meeting with some of our critical employees, and again, they're, they're not necessarily our employees with, with big titles, they're, they're people who do critical financial and operational processes. Um, we, we, we do have staff who take vacation leave, but they're taking that laptop with them, and they're doing those critical processes, and do they have a backup? Absolutely, they do, but they are the best person in the organization to run that process, and, and sometimes it's, you know, a, a, you know, a, a thirty-minute process, but they're, they're taking the vacation time and, um, and when, when we could go with an alternative approach of, of recognizing that, you know, when that person spends two hours, um, you, you know, doing some work for the district, that we could credit that time back to them, we just don't have a policy mechanism to do that. So, um, a- and, and so we're simply, and again, these are Neola, um, um, policies, and so really all this is doing is giving us the authority, um, to, um, to make those situations work and not have people officially working while they're on vacation. Now, again, if, if they don't want to, that's fine, um, but, you know, there are situations that come up, and, and we just think the flexibility is necessary.
Any questions about this one?
Yeah, I, I just want, I just wanted to make sure I understood this, that, because the purple language is what the district has added, and that sounds like what the superintendent is trying to achieve, which is temporary. But my question is, will this policy also allow for what is now being considered like a hybrid workplace, where somebody might come in three days a week and work from home two days a week? Um, like, actual job descriptions that would come before us, that would have those types of things, does this allow for that as well? Because I see the purple part, but I also see the black part, which I, I guess I'd, I'd like to make sure I understand what this is really going to do.
I think, I think Mrs. Messenger, in theory, it could lead to that. That's not the intention at this point. I will tell you, there are districts that, um, that are doing, um, pilot projects, where you have certain departments that really, because they're hard-to-staff areas and those industries, um, are working remote, and so it's harder to compete for labor. So, that may be a conversation for down the road, but our, our initial intent as a leadership team, um, is that, you know, this is an opportunity to, you know, to authorize specific instances. Obviously, if, if we got to the point where we felt like there was a department or a specific job where we were just not competitive, um, you know, then, then that's, you know, then that would be an option, but certainly, I think it's a conversation that, that we would have together. Um, it's certainly not the intent that, um, and, and, and I made this point to the principals, um, when we were together earlier this week, it's not the intent that suddenly this place will be empty and everyone will be at home. Um, the intent is that, um, when we have critical situations, we have authorization to work through them.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm not even against doing remote or hybrid or whatever you'd need to do, because I totally understand, and I know that there's a lot of businesses that are doing that to attract the best people. Like, that's just a m- modern business, business practice at this point, I think. So, I do understand that, but then there's a lot of businesses that are trying to push their people back into the offices. People are trying not to, right? So, um... I guess, I, you know, I like people, I want to be around people, but, um, so, I just wanted to make sure I understood, you know, because to me, as I read this, I do think it allows for more than what is being stated, and I'm not against that, but if the district were to decide that that was necessary, I imagine that what would come before us would be some sort of job description that says, you know, this will be remote or hybrid or whatever, or there'd be some sort, I'm, I'm, I guess I'd assume that that would need to be done. I'm trying to think of, do our job descriptions have the building location? When we approve where somebody gets hired, it has their building location. So, so if that were to be altered long-term, I would imagine that would have to come before us, because that would be a change in location. I just want to know, how will the board be notified should something change that's not temporary, but like a long-term change?
Uh, we could, we certainly could do that through a job description. Um, I, I, it's a conversation I would want to have anyway, because the, the reality is our teachers, our principals, our school staff.
They can't go anywhere.
Are there every day.
Yeah.
And, and, and the, the people who work in our central offices, we exist to support the school. So, um, so again, I don't think there's any plan at this point, but, but we could have a need emerge, um, you know, and, and, and I think that would be, at that point, we'd come in and make our case for that. Um, but, but again, the intent is not that all of a sudden departments would all be working at home.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because you're right, there was, when everybody went remote, right, but the teachers didn't, there was some really negative feelings, rightfully so, and I don't want that to be the feeling either. And so, I, I agree that, you know, it would need to be some sort of conversation somewhere down the line, should the district deem, you know, we can't hire this position, anybody local, but hey, this person in Colorado's awesome, and I don't know why I think Colorado, it's cold there. Um, they'd want to move here. Um, but, you know, this person in Colorado's awesome, we really need this very specific skill set. I, I guess I could see that somewhere down the line.
And, and I think this policy language, um, again, does, does, this, this doesn't, um, this authority doesn't trickle down the organization, right? The, the policy specifically says the superintendent. So, it's not a case where all of a sudden, somebody's gonna just say, oh, I sent everybody home.
And you work from home, and you work from home.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I got.
We're not going there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Spray, you had a question?
Okay. Um, first of all, I have a family member that works totally remote from home. She has kids. It works well for her. Um, I don't know if I would go to California or Colorado to get somebody to work for our district. Yeah, I, I would rather it be local if we ever had, went to that area, but I do know that once our new superintendent got here, we had conversations about cross-training different people in departments to where when people go on vacation, and, and I know corporations that you are forced to go. You can't buy your time back, you can't do any, you are required to take this time off. We don't want you logging in and doing your job from home. And then I've seen on the other side where mechanics will go on vacation, but something's broke down, and we need that expertise, so that mechanic would call in and talk to another mechanic and walk them through the repair, and then we're paying basically two mechanics to fix that one item. So, sometimes you have to get the, weigh out the difference there, but I just wanted to bring up the point that I want to keep the cross-training thing in mind, that this would be in a, you know, there's gonna be cases where we could do, uh, kind of a hybrid, but to keep in mind that we want you to take that time off. We don't want you logging in at, you know, it's seven o'clock at night when it's movie night, because something happened at one of our schools. We'd rather somebody that's cross-trained deal with that. Like, when the superintendent is gone, we get the email that the deputy superintendent is in charge, so I'm not gonna call him, I'm gonna call him. So, that's just a point I wanted to bring up, that, you know, keep in mind, we are doing the cross-training, so we won't have to, uh, interrupt people's, uh, time off. And that's all I wanted to say about that. Thanks.
Alright. Hope that's it.
Can I just say one more thing, just to help, just to give her a little bit more information? Um, in, in our policy, and I'd have to go pull up the policy, um, I, I, uh, I don't think this is true of all the employee groups, but like, for instance, SAM, if you, you only can carry so many hours forward every calendar year. So, you are essentially forced...
That's just an example.
Yeah, you know, no, I'm just letting you know, you are essentially forced to either use those days or lose those days, you know? Um, and I know, like, um, Mr. Wagner, at the end of the year, would always send an email to, like, people that hadn't used up all their days, or like, hey, you, if you don't use these, you know, you're gonna lose these. Go use your vacation days, you know?
I've been there. Use them or lose them.
Thank you.
Just one quick point that I wanted to make, since you brought up the possibility of an employee remote working in Colorado. There are some really complex laws that have to be followed relative to remote work. If you're going, I mean, we have our Florida state withholding rules and requirements as an employer, and if we start allowing employees to remote work in other states, there are tax implications in terms of what we should be withholding from those. And, and some states are trying to, you know, work on those and, and create their own rules, so I would, I would recommend against...
Nobody from Colorado.
Well, I would, I would recommend against allowing any remote work outside of the state of Florida beyond fourteen days. Because right now, that, that seems to be the temporary presence rules that are being followed with tax implications, so we don't want to go beyond that if we were to prohibit, if we, if we were to permit remote work when they're not in the state of Florida.
We could directly contract, we could directly contract with them, ten ninety-nine them.
No.
That would...
Uh, uh, I, I mean, we're going in a bunch of hypotheticals, so we're good.
That lady says no.
We're good with, with...
Short answer, no.
I think we're good with the remote work. Thank you, though.
But if they live in the Panhandle of Florida, and they don't want to move down here, I don't know why, they're crazy, but you know, if they live up there.
It's cold there, too.
It's cold there, too. Thank you very much. I'm a Florida girl. Alright.
Alright, your next one.
Okay, so, two down. Uh, the next one is eighty-three, twenty-five, uh, receipt of legal documents by district employees. I think you have a physical copy of that, redlined, uh, uh, by, uh, Ms. DiAgostino, our general counsel, and I'm gonna, uh, put the microphone to, to my colleague to explain, uh, this one, which I think we talked a little bit about on Tuesday, but I'll let, uh, our general counsel talk about this one.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, based on the board's action on Tuesday, I put this together. Um, it's short, sweet, simple edit. I think it accomplishes what you were hoping for, but if it doesn't, we can certainly, um, work on that language.
Looks great.
Um, I know for me, it does.
Yeah.
I mean, it matches everything there, so that, that wasn't, that's not, um, I don't think there's any, for me personally, anything added or taken away from that. I, I do personally have some other questions on the rest of the policy. Um... And this goes to what, even with this, why we, why I believed the change to this needs to happen, and I briefly talked about it with Dr. Weisong. Um, so, my concern with anything legally processed to anyone in the school district is, um, making sure it gets to the right, starts with the right person, which I personally believe is our council, making sure that everybody, that, that whatever the, the legal issue is, lawsuit, subpoena, whatever potentially legally could be binding with the district, that you, or anyone, whoever our council is, knows exactly where it is, what's going on, et cetera. My concern with, with the way this is written, um, and, and going to school sites, um, and the principal or site administrator being responsible causes some issues for me. So, number one, I'll take it from this, the teacher's standpoint. So, if perhaps, um, I'll, I don't know, I'm just sending example, an E S E teacher, could have an E S E issue with a student, and there's, um, some kind of subpoena, whatever, I, I make up the, the, the issue. We're gonna call the teach, so basically, the, the, the processor will go to the school, be at the front desk, contact whoever the principal, then all of a sudden, the teacher's gonna be pulled out of the classroom to then come up and be processed, and I don't know how many people have been processed, but, uh, like I said, I was at my house. And so, like, I don't know if it's a true sheriff's badge or whatever, but the guy comes out of his truck with a sheriff's badge and, you know, I mean, neighbors are neighbors, right? Like, oh my gosh, what, what, what are they being served with? So, for, for that to happen on a school site to where students, parents, other teachers, other staff could potentially see this, and it could be very something frivolous, right? It could be something, nothing at all, or typically, how public perception is, we typically say, oh my gosh, and we go to the, the nth degree of something. Did so-and-so hit a kid? Or touching, you know, whatever, right? So, I feel going to the site causes not only that portion, but also then it just adds to the chain of where it's gotta eventually go, which I truly believe is the council for, for the school district. What if the teacher, and, and I, uh, we could probably, what if everything, I know that, but we're asking if a teacher gets a, gets something like this subpoena law, whatever it is, now, if it's their personal stuff, personal stuff's set aside, but if it's something with the school district, and it never gets back to us, it never makes its way back for whatever reason. Um, my concern with that is now we've got a teacher or staff member or somebody that's not being supported by someone that knows what they're doing legally, right? And that's a concern, that's a concern to me, um, because then that could open up a whole lot of more cans and more worms, et cetera. And so, that's my biggest, that, that's my biggest concern with reading the rest of this, is how we, how everybody is, is serviced in the district. Now, that's not to mean we're opening our doors and saying processors, just because Chad Choats, a math teacher at Manzi High School, you get to come to the school district and serve on the fender bender that he got into, that someone's saying that it's his insurance and not, and now he's gotta be, I'm not saying we need to get into that. Um, I guess I don't even know if we can stop that, right? So, that's a, I know that's a concern, when Dr. Weisong and I spoke about this, that was a concern, like, hey, we don't want to accept our employees' personal litigations, et cetera, right? We definitely not, we don't want responsibility for that either. Um, but is the risk, and it, it, so, Mr. Tatum talks about this all the time, about the risk, right, and sometimes you gotta take on this risk, and so, me personally, I think it's if the risk is, is worth taking, that we're gonna take someone's personal, then the risk of not being able to know from a school site or somewhere else that there was a subpoena, there is a lawsuit, or even, again, the public perception of someone being served on a school site. Does that make sense? And, and I don't know if anybody else, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know if you necessarily want to talk about that to now, or do you want to wait for everybody else?
Well, can I, can I, I think...
Absolutely, yeah.
You might clear up some things first, if I at least addressed all of them.
Absolutely.
Try to address the points you hit. One, one important thing to understand is that, um, the rules regarding service of pro, service of subpoenas and things of that nature, not, and lawsuits are, are, it's gonna be a little bit different, because obviously, if, if a, if a, an employee... going to be a little bit different, because obviously, if, if a, if a, an employee of the district, in their official capacity, is being sued in a lawsuit, service needs to happen on them. That, that, that has to happen. They have, the, the, the litigant who is suing them has to tag that individual. There isn't a board policy that allows us to accept that lawsuit, service of that lawsuit on that individual, whether it's in their individual capacity, or whether as a private citizen, or in their individual capacity. They alone have that right, when it's a lawsuit. So that's separate from a subpoena. Does that make, does that make sense so far?
Yeah, yeah. What you're saying, in their capacity, as a school board member, or as a school board employee.
Either, either in their capacity, or, or privately. Only they can, can dictate. Like, if someone wanted to sue me, Pamela DiAgostino, either as an individual, private individual, or in my official capacity as the general counsel for the district, only I can accept that lawsuit. Only I. Because I'm individually, as a person, being named. You, as the board, can't authorize anyone else to accept that lawsuit on my behalf when I am a named party. Same would go for any one of you, same would go for any other employee of the district, if you're being served, and step in if you, if you disagree with anything I'm saying, but, yeah. Now, that's a lawsuit, that's different. A subpoena, now, a subpoena matters in whether or not it is a private matter, a civil matter that has nothing to do with their official capacity. For example, a family law matter between, you know, a teacher who may be going through a divorce. There is absolutely no authority for the district to accept service on behalf of that teacher in that private civil matter that has nothing to do with their employment with the district. We don't have the ability to do that. It would be completely improper for us to be accepting that subpoena on behalf of that individual. We would be violating their right to be personally served. We can't do that. Service has to be had on them. Now, if it's a subpoena pursuant to their official capacity or their employment with the district, we can absolutely accept. If it's a criminal case. If it's a civil case, we can't. Because, again, they have that right.
Okay. Even if it's with their capacity of the school district?
Yes. There is actually a statute that dictates, that says that the superintendent has the ability, if it is a criminal case, to designate someone to accept subpoenas on behalf. Not if it's a civil case. If it's a civil case, even if it's pursuant to their official capacity, we can't accept service of a subpoena. Only the employee can. Because they have the right to decide who serves them. In their employment, if it's a criminal case, he can. But that's something that he has to designate someone. And so, it, it gets very complex, because, you know, if a process server shows up, we have to determine, hey, what kind of case is this? You know, is it civil or is it criminal? And then we know what we can and cannot do. And we're actually in, in discussions with the sheriff right now to try to work through what would be an appropriate process where we could accept the criminal subpoenas, but not the civil, and, and how to work out those terms pursuant to the statute. But it's, it's complex stuff.
Okay.
Sheriff, were you, were you saying that we maybe shouldn't allow an employee or a teacher to be interrupted while they're on duty, and have to stop what they're doing and go to the office, or whatever, and accept, accept documents? Was that part of your concern?
Yes, yeah. Well, and, and part of it is, now that, that council's told us that, some of that stuff, right? Like, if we can't take a civil, I would love, I mean, I guess you're going to, processors are going to do whatever you can to get it served, right? And, I, I mean, I don't know if we can legally sit there and say you can't take it during your work hours. I mean, I, and I'm not necessarily, I don't know if it's that so much as, I just, I want to make sure that from a, from us and our employees, that we are doing everything we possibly can to be the first ones to know about any lawsuit, subpoena, anywhere where our people are going to have to be speaking on our behalf. Um, now, personal stuff, absolutely, I would love, but to your question, um, I would love for the processor not to show up at Miller Elementary at twelve o'clock to serve a teacher who's getting a divorce potentially, and has some issue. I would lo, I mean, I don't even know if we can legally, I don't think we can legally say no to that. Now, hopefully, the processor sees that this may be an issue, go to their house first, maybe after, but I don't know, do they even know, processors know where people work and all that, I guess? I, I mean, I don't know that process. So I can't, but yes, I would love for none of our teachers to be served, or principals to be served on any kind of lawsuit at the school. Because, again, I just think that brings up not only the, not only the, the, the education time and instruction time, but perception and, and all that, you know?
Well, we, we can, um, if, if, if the person they're trying to serve is busy, in the middle of a class, teaching a class, we, the, the school personnel have the right to say, the teacher's not available right now, their planning period is between here and here, you know, the school day ends at this time, whatever, they, they can tell them, you can come back during this time. But as an employer, we, we do have to allow for that process of service to occur in a private area, so that they're not just being served in front of anyone else, or we can be fined if we don't accommodate that. So we, I think we can reasonably say, the teacher is busy right now, they will be available, you know, at one o'clock, when their planning period starts, or at, you know, this time, or if you come back tomorrow, here's when their planning period is, but we do need to give them a private room to allow that service of process to take place out of anyone else's view.
When you, when you, when you talked about the, the criminal and civil, like subpoenas and things like that, so, the civil side, I get, we can't accept that, under any circumstances. How do we know whether or not it's criminal or civil? When someone comes to our doors, someone looking at it and saying, hey, this is what it is, and then you don't sign off because it's like, hey, this is civil, we can't sign off for this? You know what I mean? Like, do the processors know those, that, that, I'm assuming they do? That, that, those, those regulatory statutes, that we can't, so like, I don't know.
The sheriff's office servers, they absolutely know what's criminal and civil, and, and they can distinguish that, and we're working through how we would do that with that. With pro, with private process servers, someone would just have to look at the subpoena, and the case number would usually reveal, depending on what type of case number, you know, what type of case it is. It shouldn't take us too long to figure out what type of case it is.
Okay.
Uh, but that is something we would have to analyze before accepting on anyone's behalf.
So then, we do have the capability, if, if they came here, for council, whoever, to look at it and say, this is a criminal case, yes, we can accept this on behalf of a, of a staff member. Or nope, this is civil, we cannot, you're going to have to find them on your own.
If, if it's civil, they would go have, have to find their own.
Right, okay.
But we, and in or, and there's a couple of other things. We, in order to accept, um, we, well, we have to make sure that they're, they're currently employed, um, that they are, let's see what I'm doing. I'm looking at the statute here. The appearance is, let's see, the appearance date must be beyond five days, because if there's, if, I cannot accept, if, if the board changed, if the superintendent decided to have me accept criminal subpoenas on behalf of all the employees, if a process server showed up and the appearance date was in two days, I can't accept. It has to have an appearance date that's beyond five days. Because the understanding is, there's got to be a reasonable amount of time for me to get it, then to that employee's hands, so they know about it. So that's another step in the process. Also, the witness has to be scheduled to work between now and then. So, if they tried to serve me with something on the twenty-second of December, and the employee is a teacher, and they're not going to be working, I can't accept. So we have to actually look at the scheduling. If the teacher's on vacation, I can't accept. If it's spring break, I couldn't accept. There's all kinds of things in the statute that, you know, dictate when you can and cannot accept, and the rules that are there. So these are all things that would have to be considered if we step into the position of now accepting subpoenas on behalf of our employees.
Okay.
And like I said, we're working through that with the sheriff's office, to see whether we can come to a reasonable, um, uh, process that we can follow, that we are comfortable with, and that, that would work for everyone, but we're, we're just still in the process.
Yeah. So, separate and apart from the more technical aspect, what we're talking about of accepting for somebody else, I think there's a good discussion on this. I don't think this happens all the time.
Yeah.
But, so we don't want to get too...
Happens a lot.
Yeah. Detailed, but I think it might help principals and other supervisors to include in our policy that what we're talking about, that, so there's, so there's some direction that if just a certain, a process server shows up, that they know to tell them, well, you're going to have to wait until, until the break, and then we'll have the employee come out, or whatever. So they have some kind of direction, so that it's not just, they're having to just deal with it willy-nilly, you know, on their own. So it might be helpful to have a little bit of a procedure of how a supervisor, or a principal, assistant principal deals with this, so that they, so that it's not, it's, because you don't want somebody interrupted when they're, you know, out coaching, teaching, fixing something, or whatever. So that's what, so that they, they know that they can tell the process server, okay, well, you're going to have to wait, the next break is an hour, or whatever, and then we'll notify them, or something like that.
And we, and we plan to put that, something like that together, so that the people at the front desk of the schools will know how to handle it, once we figure out exactly how we're going to handle this process.
Yeah, good.
Okay, I think I'm done, as of now. Go ahead.
Um, I, I don't have any problem with the service process on the school board. I think, um, you know, that's, um, however, it goes without, should go without saying, but perhaps we need to say it, is that anyone who receives process of, service of process must, within X number of days, send a copy to the board attorney, to the district attorney, to the superintendent, to the board chair, to those four parties. Just everybody, wa, you know, a big, a big swath of, make sure everybody knows it and has copies of it. I really, um, sometimes, you know, it goes to, you know, the, to an attorney's office, and, yeah, you, you've got it and you're handling it, but we don't know, and that's, you know, so, um, so I would like to see that. Um, the rest of, of the, I agree with you on the service of legal documents on board employees. I think it needs some analysis and revision, because I do have concerns that principals are, first of all, they're not required to tell you, and you, and you, and you, you know, at, those same four parties. And that is a concern to me. I mean, they have to do it to their site administrator.
Oh, they have to furnish, it, it says, the principal or site administrator shall immediately furnish copies of the documents to the general counsel. So I am supposed to be notified.
Okay, well, I think it should also go to the board attorney, the chair, and the superintendent.
Okay.
You know? Um, and then, because, because they shouldn't be off on their own trying to figure out how to comply with a subpoena. You know, it should be directed through the attorneys, through the district, the superintendent, um, so that, so that it's appropriately answered, and so that we're not, not letting the, uh, letting things go that we shouldn't. The other thing is, the paragraph that says, principal or site administrator may accompany the employee to the deposition or hearing if it is determined that his or her presence is in the best interest of the board. It doesn't say who's determining whether it's in the best interest. And I think that they're, the employee and a principal or site administrator, that should be directed, but with the advice of council, and not, um, I don't know, I don't know who's, who's going to make that determination. So I think that paragraph needs, um, needs some beefing up, so. Just some thoughts.
I can tell you that, just, just anecdotally, I have accompanied one employee to a deposition because they requested it. So I'm, I'm offering that, even though there's no, there's nothing in here that says that, but anytime an employee says to me, hey, I've been called to this hearing, I'd like you to come, if it's pursuant to their official capacity, I will go with that, just so you know.
But if we have someone working in the district who is called to the deposition, and they decide to go, to go it alone, we don't want that. We want them to have the advice of board and district council in making that decision.
Well, we...
And it doesn't say who's going to determine, you know, whether, um... I, I just, I just wish, I, I think we, we should take a, I, I know of a couple of instances, things that have happened in the past. They weren't necessarily subpoenas, but they were legal, they, it was correspondence that was legal, and, um, it didn't make it to the right parties. And in one case, a principal acted on a contract that they had no authority to do. So how, you know, whether this can cover that, I don't know, but, um, but it could, we should spell it out, you know, and, and try to prevent problems.
Oh, I'm sorry, read it.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as purposes of this, adoption of this, I think this is fine, um, unless you all want to add, you know, that service gets copies sent to the chair, superintendent, general counsel, and school board attorney.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I think it really matters. I mean, I think that, um, I'm okay with adding that, or not, I mean...
Yeah.
Or just knowing that that's a procedural thing, but...
I think it needs to be spelled.
If it's in the policy, then you got to do it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then the rest of it, we could, you know, you might want to take a look at it and make recommendations, I don't know.
I just had a question for Mrs. Foreman on that change. What would your, what's, if, if it already says it's going to go to general counsel, what's the goal of all the, of those, all those other parties being notified?
No, I'm talking about service of process. It doesn't say it's going to go to general counsel. It's who's going to, who's going to receive it. It doesn't say where it goes, or who gets notified.
Oh, I see, on the top part. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the employee part.
Really, these are two different sets of...
They are. Okay, I, I misunderstood. So you're saying, just this top part, you want all those other people? I'm totally in support of that.
I'm sorry, which top, I want to make sure...
The service of process on the school board.
Okay, so...
So when we are actually processed with something, that it goes to those?
Okay, so you want a sentence added to the first paragraph to instruct the recipient of the service of process to share that with those three other folks? Okay.
And I would even add, if we're served, that all board members are, are, um, not just notified, just made aware of. You know what I'm saying? If we're served, I would like to...
I would, too, and, and that's been a beef of mine.
Right, and, and she had mentioned that before, because when we got the list, and she brought up the fact that there were two things that were filed that we did not know about, so I would actually say, if there was any service to the board, um, staff or us, that were emailed that, just a FYI, this has been done, keeping you in a loop type thing, I don't know if that should be a sentence, but...
Instead of just, instead of just the school board chair, just say...
Right. The school board members, exactly. So that would be my, um, friendly amendment to that line. Uh, but I'm looking at the policy that's printed, as well as on board docs, and this is a Neola, and this policy hasn't been modified since 2013 from Neola, correct? All right, so we're adding this red paragraph, and, but we're also talking about, to Mr., to the chair's point, um, we have, none of that was discussed in the Tuesday conversation about this policy. Nothing but this about who is authorized, but you, now you're saying district employees may be served legal. I mean, you were talking about the other parts that...
So, but this is, but our, what we decided on Tuesday was the whole policy, which is eighty-three twenty-five...
Right.
...to be put out on thirty-day notice. So this whole policy, although we were, at the time, talking about just the service of process on the school board... talking about just the service of process on the school board, now that the policy's in front of us.
Today, you're talking about more of it.
Yes, now the policy's in, now that, now the policy's in front of us, and it's actually been noticed about the entire policy, et cetera.
Okay.
That's where I, this week, obviously reviewing it, that's where I looked at everything else, from what I just discussed a second ago, yeah.
So are you recommending that, that there are others, other line items on this policy that need to be redlined and, and changed?
Yeah, I mean.
Based on your conversation, it sounds like, yeah.
On my conversation, yes, I would like to have us have something in the policy that, that as much as we possibly, I don't know how you want to word it, I'm not the wordsmith, that's you two.
Our parameters, not our parameters.
But, but whatever we can possibly accept, subpoena-wise, litigation-wise, whatever it is, on behalf of our, of our staff members, that we do that. Obviously, we couldn't with civil, obviously, we can't with personal. The que, the question becomes, cool, we have the policy, it's about the actual process of how it works out on a day-to-day basis, right? That's the question, too, that comes in, into place, because, again, you're, someone's got to open it up, someone's got to look at the case number, is it civil, is it, is it, if we could possibly get that worked out with the sheriff's office, et cetera, that, that they know, hey, any criminal, yes, it comes here, but any civil, you know what I mean? I, that's the part that I don't know how, to, to help.
And that's where I'm at with that. I mean, if a district employee is being served, to your example, they're going through a divorce, I wouldn't want, if it were me, I wouldn't want the principal or site administrator to look at that and say, oh, this employee's being served for something outside of the district realm. So how that's identified, I mean, we've all seen the proverbial yellow envelope with the tab on it, here you're being served, kind of, I'm just kidding.
No, I agree with you.
Right, so here you're being served. You know, I wouldn't want somebody opening that, that's, you know, if it were me, looking at it and saying, oh, gosh, this is a personal matter, we shouldn't be getting this, and I mean, now I know about this, about this of my employee. So, yeah, I think that kind of needs to be looked at, and then, I guess you're working with the sheriff, of course, and of course, we have to work with statutes and all of that. But maybe incorporate something in there that if it is a civil, that, that be identified, outside of the envelope, this is a civil case, this is a whatever. Is that a possibility? They could do that?
They could, but we don't have the authority to, to make them do that.
No, but it would be a friendly, if you please could. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree, no, I agree. I mean, I don't know, obviously, we can't make them do anything. But can they work with us? And, and to, to that point with the school, I think Mr. Dye is correct on like, and, and you've said it too, maybe somewhere in here, and when we talked about the process, you were going to make this process for the principals and things like that, that they know their first response is, you know, not to pull this teacher from, from teaching.
Right.
Because, again, think about like, okay, you're in the middle of teaching third grade, and it's mathematics, or I don't know, name of the subject, and all of a sudden, you get pulled off, and you don't even know you're getting sued, now you're, now you're sued or subpoenaed, whatever. Now you've got to go back and teach the third graders math again? And you just got served, you know what I mean? So I think, we, if we can legally make it, make it a requirement to say, you only can serve during, you know, these, like a planning period, or when school ends at three o'clock, whatever, I think that'd be fantastic.
Maybe just a, right, just a inner governmental agreement, it doesn't have to, I don't know. But, yeah, to, to your point, if that teacher is being served, and now they have to go back and teach the rest of the day, and this is on the back of their mind, I mean, you can put all kinds of scenarios out there, but I don't know what the, how do they do this for county employees or whatever, you know, is there, have, have we looked at what they do for that, the sheriff's department and/or whoever is serving?
Well, just so you understand, there's, there's, the board policy governs receipt of legal documents by the district employees, but there's a Florida statute, forty-eight point oh three one, which gives the authorization to the superintendent as the head of, the highest ranking official of the, of the district, to decide what parameters he's going to have to accept service. So you, you, you can put it in your policy, there's no need to put that aspect into your policy, because the statute gives him the authority to work through those things, and, and come up with how we want to handle that. And he's hearing all your feedback, and, and we're working through that process.
What, what statute, did you just quote?
Forty-eight point oh three one.
Forty-eight point oh three one.
Forty-eight point oh three one is the statute that gives the highest ranking official, the superintendent, the, the authority to designate someone who can accept service on behalf of the district.
And even like the process of, if someone were to go to the school site, like that's, he has that authority as well.
He has the authority, yeah, that's, that's why.
You don't have to put that in.
There's no need, I mean, there's no need to put it in your policy, because he can establish that process statutorily.
Sure.
So that's why we're in communication with the sheriff.
And theoretically, from site to site, it could be different. I mean, if, if you wanted to, I'm not saying you would want to necessarily do this, but one high school could be different from MTC, that could be different, I mean, I don't know.
The statute anticipates that he's going to select essentially one person, on behalf of the entire organization.
Yes, I meant, I didn't mean the acceptance, I meant like the process of going to a school site and serving someone that we could not accept. Like, that process, when you go to a, a, a school site, could be different at theoretics, I'm not saying we'd want that, but it could be different at every school site, depending on their schedules, their, you know what I mean? Like, so, I don't mean the person he, he deems to accept on behalf of us, the school district. I mean, that process to where, if we're not accepting it, and they got to go to a teacher or somebody else, that particular process that, that superintendent creates could be different for each site, or middle school, high school, elementary school. I'm not saying it's going to be, but it could be.
So.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that's something we don't have to have in our policy. That's a procedure issue that he can deal with and create what those procedures are for those members of, of staff that we can't accept.
Yeah, well, if we, if we aren't going to accept, we have to comply with the statute, and basically give them a private room.
Correct.
To serve the individual. But understanding that we don't have to disrupt the learning day and disrupt school in order to pull that person out. And, and the principal would have the flexibility to say, hey, planning periods, lunch hours, whatever, at their site.
Okay.
So would that statute need to be quoted at the bottom of our policy, FS forty-eight point oh three one? Like FS one zero zero point four oh is on.
Well, the reason it's not quoted in here is because we don't have a policy, we, we don't.
So once we do, okay.
If you put that, if, if the board decided to insert into this policy rules governing how we're going to accept service, then yes, you would reference it here. But if we're going to continue to allow the superintendent to figure out that process and procedure, then none of that would go in here, and it wouldn't be added.
I got you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, it does. You got enough over there now to think about? We can add some more.
Any other board members have any comments on this?
I do.
Yeah, absolutely. Did you have any? No?
I have, I have a question about the difference between what you might call the legal support that we provide. It says, on page two there, it says, "Actions against the school board, district legal counsel and the superintendent will assist district employees in these matters as per matters arising during the course and scope of employment and the furtherance of business on behalf of the district." But it doesn't say that when we're dealing with legal documents served on board employees. Is there a, a difference in how we would support, or am I, am I not reading, understand what I'm saying? It seems like actions, litigation against the school board, as opposed to service of legal documents on board employees. And, and you read through there, it just says, well, "The principal aside, administrator shall ensure that the only records specifically identified in the subpoena order are released." Are we supporting those kind of cases, too, or not?
Well, here's, here's the way I read this. The first paragraph, which is above the section labeled "Actions and Litigations Against the School Board."
Right.
That is, if you have an employee who has been subpoenaed, maybe pursuant to a private matter, like a family law dispute.
Right.
Part of that family law dispute may have to do with what's going on in our schools. So we're not a party to the suit.
Right.
It's not a suit against the school board, but we will still support that employee, and if needed, attend the deposition with them, attend the hearing, help them through that process, if we determine that helping them is in the best interest of the school. Does that make sense? Okay. And then the second paragraph, the, the second to last paragraph, that pertains to instance, where, instances where the school board is a party to the suit. And of course, we will always support our employees in that process.
Okay. So if, for instance, if records need to be provided by a school or something, does, is there any legal review by you before that stuff goes out, or is it just, the principal is kind of responsible for determining what's in compliance, or?
Records are a bit complicated, because it depends on what type of records are being subpoenaed. If the records that are subpoena, being subpoenaed are student records, there's one department that handles those. If the records that are being subpoenaed are emails and correspondence like that, a different, you know, there's other folks that are involved in that. If the, if the records that are being subpoenaed are employment records, that's an entirely different type of record. Or if it's what we would consider business records of the district, contracts, things of that nature, that's another area. So it's a complex process, depending on what records are being asked for. The folks in the district who are the subject matter experts and know where those records are, they get the records, they compile them. If they need my assistance in any way, I help, but I don't supervise that process, because they're the custodians of those records, they know what they need to get. If they have questions about, hey, what are they really asking for, I communicate with the law, with the law firm if they ask me, and, and help them through that process.
Okay, so you're available for any district employee who has legal issues to deal with, to get advice and counsel from you to help them through that process?
Yes.
Okay.
Provided it's related to their employment.
Provided it's related to their employment, that's right. Okay, that's, that's good to know, and I'm glad to hear that, and that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, we are going to take a break right now. So I guess we'll leave it with, let's leave it with this. I, I think that we all agreed on the, the service of process of the school board to add that sentence on notifying the, whoever receives that information notifies superintendent, school board members, school board attorney.
The board, the superintendent, and the other attorney.
So I think we're all agreeing with that. And then, on, so moving, everything else that we discussed, all that is going to be something that we obviously allow you to make the decision, we, you've heard from us, and you may hear from us again, or may want to come to us again, or whatever, and we'll figure the rest of that.
Yeah, if it's a major change, we should bring it up.
That part out, okay.
It, it is, and it's complex, and I think that's the, the challenging part, is getting, getting a procedure that works for everybody.
Right, all right.
Awesome. All right, we are going to take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you.
Any, you know, future landowners in their development where they'll be assigned to at least for the first year. Any questions on that process?
Yes, I do. You're, when you're talking about it only being for the first year, that's for the administrative rezoning?
Yes, I mean, for the administrative rezoning, we can do it for the first year and they can, they can be a priority as well. And as well as the second is the, the class size, and they can be a priority as well.
Right, now, I saw in the class size one that it was for a year. I don't see that in the administrative one, but that's your intention is for it only to be for the year? So it's not permanent? That was my question.
Yeah, and, and the, the reason is, a lot of the administrative rezoning is happening because we have a new school coming on. So, so therefore, they, if we do a, a full rezoning, they would in fact be rezoned potentially to that new school, or their previous school that they were zoned to, with a new school coming on board, there would, it would be open there. Now, this is only if there is capacity. If we still have the same issue that the campus is over, then there's no eligibility to come back to the original school.
So, okay, I, I want to only talk about the administrative rezoning, not the other assignment one, the class size one. Only the administrative one, because to me, there seem like they're two different pieces. Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, the administrative one, essentially, let's say, a new community gets built, is getting built out in Parish, and I'm gonna pick Parish because, come on, let's be honest. And, what?
Your district.
Okay, well, Lakewood Ranch, whatever. I'll pick one or the other. It doesn't matter, right? It's gonna be one or the other. That's what we got. Oh, guys, come on. Okay, so...
Anyway, I'm just kidding, go ahead.
But we already have a plan for that site when that comes on, but anyways. Yes. Let's say that that happens. We, there's, some developer says, "I'm gonna build 3,000 houses on these bajillion acres I just bought out in Parish," or Lakewood Ranch. And it's zoned for whatever elementary school that's already packed to the gills, because everyone else is also building a bajillion houses out wherever it is. So then, the superintendent's gonna look at it and say, "Okay, but, you know, we don't have this, we don't have enough seats. We know that this neighborhood with those 3,000 houses is gonna generate 1,000 children, and we don't have, that's 600 elementary school kids, or 500 elementary school kids. We don't have the capacity at that elementary school, but I do have capacity at elementary school that's further away. So, this neighborhood is now zoned for that school." Is that, am I understanding the process?
Yeah, typically with transportation, because usually it's over two miles.
Right. So then, my question is, let's say that were to happen, is the intention that that is temporary, or is the intention that we know that this is over capacity and we're building a new school, and once, and once the new school is built, then we'll deal with rezoning it? And so, it's temporary in the sense that it's short term because we're gonna build a new school, but it's really a permanent decision until the new school is built? Or is it temporary, meaning only for the year, and then we'll reassess after a year? Do you know, am I explaining myself well? I'm trying to understand the permanency of that decision.
Right. I believe the intent is that it, it is permanent unless changed again, and the change again, once you start building, becomes the regular rezoning process where you bring in committees and all of that. The, the intent here is, before any family is impacted, we see we have an issue, and so, let's go ahead and address it. And again, it's, it's titled administrative rezoning, it still comes to the board for approval, right? So, i- if the staff comes up with something that three of you find unacceptable, you, you just tell us no, and then we go back and try something else.
I'm not sure that's true, because number three says, "Any proposed administrative rezoning shall be approved by the board." It doesn't say may be approved by the board, it says shall.
So...
Oh, no, we're gonna go into the shall conversation.
So, that's a great, well, okay, so, to be clear, and we'll, we'll revise. The intention was not to say you must approve it, the intention was to say, this is not a staff decision, it is a decision of the elected officials, so we will fix that, so that's clear. Thank you.
It does actually say, shall, we shall approve it. We have no choice but to approve it. You will do, like, I just, which, you know...
But that was, right, but that wasn't, that wasn't author's intent, so we'll fix it. So, thank you. That's why we needed to have this discussion, to, to get the language right.
It's the...
First page, number three?
Correct.
Yeah, under administrative.
E, administrative rezoning, number three.
Right.
So, so we can adjust this to say, "The proposed administrative rezoning will be brought to the board for consideration."
Yes, shall be brought to the board for consideration would be a good shall.
Right.
That's, that's a bad shall. Okay, I think I understand. So, it would actually be permanent, but with the intention of, we'll build another school because we know it's crazy and...
Right, it, it, right, i- if one is needed, right, if, if it, if you've got a, if you've got a school that's close to capacity, and you've got a, a school that's proximate, that has space, it may end up being that down the road, you don't need a third school. But then again, you may. It just depends on what else is, is going on in that area.
Okay. All right, that, that makes me nervous, only because I, as much as I do not enjoy the rezoning process when it goes through committees, what makes me nervous is, I understand if it were temporary, or I understand that it, it probably really shouldn't be temporary in the sense that you're doing this before it's built, and families are buying into whatever they're told. So, I, I'm, I get that. But I worry that this will now remove the need for any committees to present, like, a larger map change, because I, and I'm not saying you would do this, but I could see a superintendent down the line going, "This neighborhood, this neighborhood, this neighborhood, you all are not gonna go here, and now I never have to bring a rezoning map before the board, because this board's not gonna wanna tackle that, 'cause it's painful, and so, I'm just gonna do this now, and then we'll never have to..." And I just worry it's gonna lead to, like, weird pockets of things on our map in the future. That's my, kinda my fear.
And, and again, that's, that's not the intent to have the discussion. It's a, it's a growth management strategy, and I, and again, I think the, the key part is that Part C. If the board was concerned that it was being used as an attempt to not go through the, the, the kind of multi-school impact attendance boundaries, then, then the board can simply say, "No, we're not gonna approve that."
Okay.
But, but that's really why this, I mean, we're, we're just bringing the board some options to deal with some of the growth management challenges. Obviously, the goal is to move attendance boundaries as infrequently as possible, right? So, when we get to the point in certain areas where we have to make a change, we really only wanna do it once. And so, this is a way to help promote that by looking at undeveloped areas where families don't have any expectation yet, and saying, "The best growth management strategy is to make this adjustment that doesn't yet impact anyone."
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against this policy, I, I, except for that number three, which I'm happy will be changed, because if it, if it's changed, then you're right, then the, when it's presented to the board, the board can go, "Well, hold on, why are we doing this one over here, and this one over here, and some of them over here?" Like, then the board can say, "No, we, we really need to redo this whole thing, it's a mess." So, as long as that is there, and the board can say, "This doesn't make sense," although, you know, nobody wants to, nobody wants to tackle that. Then, I can, I can see the value in doing this, especially since, when you convene the committees and do all that, it's such a big and lengthy process, and this would allow the superintendent to be nimble and act as needed. So, I, I, I'm not against the policy, I think it makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to make sure I understood what the time length was. I guess my only other question is, let's say, they're building, they're going, they're advertising now to this, for this community, "Hey, we, this school is now gonna actually be zoned for this one, even though this one's closer, and this is why," or whatever, they'll spin that however they wanna spin it. But, let's say that the intention is that at some point, we are gonna build a new school, and therefore, they're probably gonna re, be rezoned again. This board has dealt with that happening to communities where it's getting switched on them rather quickly, because of new schools and how things change, or how, at least they perceive it as quickly, yeah. How will it be communicated to those families, and I guess this is probably on the developer, but if we're doing this, and it kind of is on us too, how will it be communicated to those people that are buying their houses that, "Hey, you're zoned for this school right now, because of this policy and this need, but this other school's gonna be built, and you could get rezoned again?"
In, in the past, we've worked with the developers, and, I mean, we're very transparent on what our five-year plan looks like, and what the location of our future schools are. Have we stated how the rezoning is actually going to happen to populate those schools? No, but even when we do the concurrency review, the statement we typically put in there is that, that you are not guaranteed to be zoned to your closest school, so that we're, you know, when we're going through with the developers, and, and we'll just reinforce that.
Okay.
And make sure that, that that comes up. But, I mean, I, the, the ideal would be to give them maybe the flexibility that's in the second part of this, where we talk about class size, that, you know, if, if they wish to stay at that school, which they were administratively rezoned, we've done it in the past where we've allowed them to stay there at some, just so that we weren't rezoning multiple times.
Okay. All right, those are my only questions about that section. Thank you so much.
Just two things, and this is strictly on the administrative rezoning. I've got some questions and concerns on the other, other, but on administrative, did you say, are, are you changing it from the first building permit to the first CO?
Um, I would, I would recommend maybe leaving it at the building permit, especially based on the discussions that we've heard, is we wanna work with the developers as early as possible. And the questions that came up is, "How do you notify the family?" Well, if, if they don't have their building permit yet, that's the ideal time to tell them, rather than when they've already started construction, and then we change. So, I think, I, I would recommend we leave it as is. I wanted to kinda get feedback from you all.
Well, isn't it, you know, obviously, during the boom right now, you know, as soon as they get a permit, you know, they're, they're, they're popping to it. But, hasn't it, in the past, when things are slower, that they get the permit, and then they don't start building for a period of time? They may find that permits are cheaper now, and, but it, doesn't that happen?
Yeah, it, it does, and, and the other challenge going through this process is, they may get a permit for a, a model home, or for the guardhouse at the front. So, we, we, we work with the county and the developer to say, "That's, you know, doing a model, that, that's not justified to, to create that line in the sand as to when we're gonna notify." So, uh, once, once we see the first true purchased building, uh, you know, purchased structure coming through a building permit, and that's...
Don't you wanna give yourself flexibility here, so that you're not, you don't have that line in the sand, that, that you say, "We're only required to do it by, by CO date", as opposed to permit. You can always do it earlier.
Yeah.
But, but I, that's my suggestion, is that you make it the, the CO. That, that makes me nervous, the building permit. And then, the other is, if a neighborhood is rezoned under this provision, it's permanent. We are gonna provide transportation?
Typically, they'll be outside that two-mile range.
So, we will be on the hook for transportation for...
But, but we'll be funded for transportation as well.
I'm sorry, you'll be what?
We will be funded for transportation, since they will be beyond that two miles. So, we'll, we'll be able to get DOE funding for transportation.
The DOE only pays roughly 50%.
Fifty percent, what, what they pay us, exactly.
Yes, so, that's, that's putting us on the hook, you know, for, for an amount of time, so...
But, Mrs. Foreman, we, we would be on the hook for that anyway. In other words, the, you know, again, an area that's not yet developed, right, where you're, where you're making that change, unless you're moving from a school that's not within, or that is within two miles to a school that isn't, that would, that would be the only, that would be the only time, and, and obviously, that would be a consideration, right, about whether this is a good tool for that specific scenario or not. But generally, you would be on, you would be, you would be covering transportation either way.
That's it. I, I, I don't wanna, uh, when we get to the other part, I wanna have, talk about that, but...
Oh, but in, in the same policy, though?
Yeah, it's in the same policy.
Okay. I just wanna keep it right now for the administrative, that's fine. Do you have any thoughts on the rezoning, administrative rezoning?
I've, I've been listening and learning. And so, what I think I heard the conversation say was that, so that developers are able to, as part of their marketing process, which I'm a capitalist, and I like people marketing their products, that we would like to help the developers market their product better by saying, "This is, this is the, when you sign a contract, I guess, and that, that, right after that, somebody pulls a building permit, that we would like to, to give the developers the possibility of saying, then, this is the school your, your child will go to." So, what, what is your experience about the time between the building permit being pulled and the house actually being built? Does that vary based on the, the market, how fast we build houses, or...
Yes, it is dependent on, on the market, but you could still, on average, prob, probably look a nine-month to 12-month time period before you'll actually see that student coming to whichever school they're assigned to.
So, along with what Ms. Foreman said, is that in, I mean, I, I'm all for playing nice with our community partners and helping them as much as we can, but is it, is that in the best interest of the school district to make those promises to these families that far in advance? Or is it, that's my question, is it, is it in our best interest to make those, make those promises that far in advance? I throw that in your lap.
Well, I mean, we, we know, we know that far in advance whether we have issues with capacity.
Okay.
Just based on the trending in the geographic area, and, as well as the number of students that we have coming in. So, really, a 12-month look ahead for us is, is more than adequate. We usually know 24 to 36 months, we're, we're forecasting issues, we're gonna have relative to capacity, bringing portables in, things like that. We're, we're working on that easily two years in advance.
Okay. So, based on your professional opinion and your experience, both you and the superintendent, who've been doing this for decades, this is an accommodation that we can work with our community partners, the builders, and not put at risk some aspect of our, for lack of a better term, integrity of making promises that we can't keep later down the road, making promises. Okay, fair enough, then. The, the other question I have is, while I'm thinking about it, is maybe, this is for Mr. Chapman, real quick. I've noticed that the, these policies, and maybe this is a change that I haven't noticed, is that they're in, they're in PDF, they're in PDF documents, but they're not PDFs, they're not text searchable. Does that make, like, if you, if you go through and look, like, I was looking for that work, the word "shall" that Mrs. Messenger was talking about, and I went to the top of the form, and I put in "shall," and it didn't, and then I put in every other word in the document, and they're not, they're, they're not text searchable anymore.
Yeah, we'll look at that, we'll look at that.
Okay. It would be helpful, especially for the real long ones that you looked at.
That would annoy me, if I couldn't do that. So, I will, I will look at that and fix that.
Yeah, they're, they're, it looks like they're images instead of actually text searchable, so, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have on that part. Thank you, yep.
You have something on the administrative one?
Well, I was just gonna point out to Ms. Messenger's point on this policy, 5120, in the first three pages, two, three pages, the word "shall" appears six times. I'm just pointing that out. And then, this is a typographical, mechanical fix on page, whatever, changes to designated areas. Number two, redistricting committee, it goes to A, then it goes section one, there's a G in there for some reason. I just, I just happened to see that. Yeah, I know, I know. So, as far as the administrative rezoning, regular tendence for that area of land that has potential, or has entitlements for future residential development. So, we have to kinda, to Mr. Tatum's point, work with our community to see intentions, what the intent is for that area and rezon. But, the rest of this policy will still be in place, so be a redistricting, a committee formed of people in, in the area, and parents who want their child to go to, well, I'm just saying, we're only looking at this one section here, correct?
At this point, yes.
Right, but the, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that all of the other things will, would still take place. Because I know this is coming down the pike, actually, the former superintendent and staff pull redistricting policy from other districts is, I still have it, of how they did it and what the process is. So, having so many different policies to review to see how we measure up to that. But, we might have more growth than other districts do, so we have to look at those, those common things, too. But, even with this addition to administrative rezoning, the word "shall" is there again, too. I just had to point that out, so, that's all. That's all I had, I just wanted to...
A, a real quick question about the administrative zoning, just so, so that, um, I, it's clear in my head. So, subdivision is being built, it's zoned for XYZ school. XYZ is, is over capacity. ABC school is within five, 10 mile, whatever the range is. So, we're gonna say, "This subdivision is going to that school." What happens in a couple of years, XYZ school that they were originally, should've probably gone to, maybe the classes have graduated, and there's less ones coming in? At that point, is it looked at again to say, "Hey, you have the chance to go back to the original school that you would've been zoned for," or are we just saying, "Nope, this is where you're going"? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does, and a couple of points, I think that the likely use of this would be for maybe a, a larger area than like a, a small subdivision that's only populating a few students, because the reality is, when the projected impact is a small number, we, we can typically handle that, right? So, we, this tends to be a, for maybe a, a, a larger project. And, and I guess the key is, if things play out, and then there's a better configuration, then you use the regular attendance zone changes, where you do committees, and you do, you know, more focus on public input, because now, that, that development has been built, there are families and children living there, right, and so, the implications of everything matter more. And so, that's why this is all kind of pre...
Right.
But, we, we, you wouldn't use this once people...
But is this going to solve, let's just be honest, is this going to solve what's happening in Parish?
It's, it's, I think it's, I think it's one more tool in the toolbox, and it just depends on how things play out. I don't think it, I, I, I don't think there's any single solution.
Right.
It's just something that's not in manatees 5120.
It's not in our toolbox to be able to use.
Right, right. And, and, and we, and we may never end up needing it, but it will be too late if we do need it, and it, and it's not already in there. So, so I think that's the key piece. Keep in mind, the, the other part of this is that, because of the state's controlled open enrollment statute, through our school choice process, a family can apply to go to any school where there's capacity. And so, and so, if thing, you know, if, if development patterns changed or whatever, and that original school had seats, and a family wanted to go there, they can still apply to go there through the choice process.
Right.
So, it's not, again, it's very different from, you know, 10 or 15 years ago. There's just so much more family choice, which is a good thing, but this does give us another way to manage growth with the goal of not moving boundaries as often as we otherwise might need to.
Yeah. Uh, no, I'm in support of it. Anything that we can have to, to be able to help us and have flexibility, I'm in support of. There were some more, board members that had questions on other parts. I know Ms. Foreman did. You wanna go and address those now?
Yeah.
Would you like me to, to go through the class, was, was it having to do with the class size?
Yeah.
Okay, so, on, on page 89 is the class size, which, you know, we're, we're talking about a school being over capacity. Now, we're going to a grade level being over capacity at a campus. So, as you all know, we, we've got, you know, class size, maximum class size that we need to adhere to according to Florida statute. So, these are new students, once again, coming in, if they have, are, are of a grade level that we do not have any capacity at that grade level, then we would find an alternate assignment for that student at that grade, grade level, with the ability of, of also allowing the sibling to be assigned to that alternate school as well. This is, this is, and we've outlined it in detail, that if you have been assigned based on the grade level, and then grade level opens up the subsequent year, then you will have the option, if you wanna come back to the original school, that you would have the ability to come back, and you'll be a priority in, in coming back to that school. Once again, but if the, the parent decides to remain at that alternate school, then they're allowed to remain as well. Once again, siblings will be permitted as part of the process as well, when it comes to the alternate assignment. So, I mean, with the administrative rezon, we're talking at the school level, now, we're talking at the grade level, and addressing overcapacity at the grade level as well.
And, and let me add a little more context, 'cause it may help with some of the questions. So, the, this tool in the toolbox really only addresses a, a specific situation where you have a school where there is no room left. Every classroom is being used, spaces allocated efficiently, and, and you've reached the point where you can continue to, to put more students in, but class sizes grow to the point where you're not gonna meet our constitutional obligation. At some point, there has to be a policy mechanism to say, "There's no more room at the end." And that, that, that's not in manatees 5120. So, this language addresses that very specific issue. And it, and it comes at it with class, at it from class size, because of course, if you have a school with an empty classroom, and more students are coming, you're gonna use that room. If you have space for a portable, you're gonna use that space. But if we get to the point where we've used every tool at our disposal, and you've got, you know, 18 students in every kindergarten through third grade, grade classroom, there, there does reach a point where you have to say to a new student coming into the school, again, no one who's already there, a new student coming in, "There's, there's no space left here, and we, we need to get you to a nearby school with space." So, that's really what this contemplates. Without a provision like this, if we reach the point at a school where there was no more room at the end, and I had no authority to act, we'd be calling an emergency board meeting, and I would be asking the board for direction on what to do. And obviously, that's not a great situation, because it, it, you know, because you end up inventing, and then, and then... um, and then, and then, um, that can be very emotional. So, um, so the goal here is to have a, a, a methodical process. And, and from a, not a policy perspective, but from a process perspective, there's lots of things you do before you need this. The first is that principal, if a principal calls and says, okay, this is where I'm at now, you're sending that principal supervisor and the facilities team to walk the school and look for, you know, have, have we really used space efficiently? Is there another way to add another third grade classroom? Is there a way to co-teach? Are there any other tools that we haven't tried yet? And if we get to the point where the answer is no, or is, is yes, we've done everything we can, then you go to this process. And, and essentially, the notion is that you do it by grade level, not by school level, because if you're, if you're completely out of room in fifth grade, but you have two seats left in fourth grade and that new family moves in, you wanna go ahead and serve them at that school. But if you have no more room in fifth grade, then, you know, then, then you need to make another arrangement for that, that next family through the door. So at that point, you administratively close that grade level. You look for space at the next closest school, you provide transportation, because that, that, that's required. And that's, that's our disincentive to ever use this, right? Because it's another bus route, it's additional cost. So this is truly last resort, board members. There are provisions for siblings that, that give the parent ultimately that decision. And, and, and then this is the point where, um, you give that family priority for getting back in the next year, if, if that's what they like to do. Sometimes families discover that that, that the, the, the second school is great and they end up not wanting to leave. So, that's the, that's the purpose of this.
Okay, question?
Okay, just to add, uh, first, I wanted to ask a question. So if students are attending the previous year, okay, say, um, students in fourth grade moving up to fifth, is there any danger of that student being reassigned? Because, say, more families in fifth grade have moved into the district and there's, there's no way an existing student can be reassigned.
Existing student, yeah, they're not in the mix.
Okay, where, I have concern here is that you get, say you've got a student in fourth grade, but kindergarten's full. Now, the, the family is gonna have to send their kindergarten student to a different school. That, is that correct? If it's, you could have.
Saying they've got an existing fourth grader.
They've got an existing student in the class.
Coming in.
But, but that new kindergartner would be entering at the start of the school year and the point is, that's all been managed. This really contemplates that the year has begun, families are continuing to move in and at some point, you're out of space. It's not, it, it, the, the purpose of it isn't, um, to use this prior to the start of a school year.
I don't see that in this section, in, in the way this policy is written.
I mean, we could, we, we can certainly add that. The, the point is, you're, you, the, the principals have allocated kindergarten classrooms. You're, you're doing, you're doing registration, um, you're trying to get people through the door and so you're, you know, you're, the principals manage that routinely. This, this is really more about what happens at the point you're totally full. I guess in, in theory, that, I mean, hypothetically, if you had, you know, dozens of, 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 of not previously registered kindergarteners show up during the four days before, things could start to get tight. But again, that's where our principals are working with their executive directors to say, okay, it looks like I may need another kindergarten classroom, but my numbers are down in a different grade level and, you know, can I, can I move things around, right? And so that, you're gonna do all of that before you're gonna reach this, the point of using this policy. But, but again, we, we're at the drafting phase, so if that's an assurance you want, we can add that.
The, the parent, the sentence that disturbs me is in B1, where it says, students in the same family will be assigned to the same alternative school. Parent may choose to enroll students, uh, in open grade levels at the zone school and only have, and have only the student in the closed grade assigned to the alternate school. That just makes me really, that concerns me, I, I just could see it just turning, turning really bad.
So, so let me, maybe we go at that from a, kind of a practical example. A, a new family comes in, um, they have a third grader and a first grader. And the, and, and, and because the school is totally full, there's no more tools in the toolbox, the, the, the third grade has been closed. What we're saying is, that third grader would be going to the, you know, the, the alternate school with open capacity and the kindergartner can go with them. Or, if the parent would, would rather say, well, wait, there's room in kindergarten and so I'm okay with my third grader going here and my kindergartner going here, the, the, the proposed policy puts that choice in the parent's hands.
Yeah, and we're gonna be sending them, driving them to charter schools and private schools. Basically, you know, um, if you've got an element, you know, I, to require them to make a decision whether to go to a school outside their zone or to split their kids up to different schools, um,
Well, I, and, and.
It's a setup for problems.
Well, and, and, and there's always a risk that a, that a family will then execute a different school choice option, but again, that's why this is the very last, th- this is the very last tool for how we deal with a school where there is no more room.
I'm comfortable with you, as our current superintendent, not, not pulling the trigger on this, but by putting it in policy, another superintendent could, you know, say, hey, I don't have to let you into that school, so. My concern, I don't know if the rest of the board has that problem. Also, there's no, um, possibility in here for an appeal. If a student, if, 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 if a family is turned down for school choice, okay, they, there's an appeal process. But here we've got this, this provision and there's no possibility for them to appeal, and I think that they should be able to.
So we, we can certainly add, the, the challenge becomes that, again, if, if, if putting the next student in a seat puts us into non-compliance with class size or creates a health, safety, welfare situation because the, the school is just jammed, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give a family false hope because the reality is, if there's no space, there's no space regardless of how compelling the reason is.
They can't come to us and we go, okay, we're gonna kick this kid out and, uh, make room for your kid. I just, you know, I, 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 I'm uncomfortable with the whole thing, so.
Understand.
Ms. Fresser?
Okay. I like the fact that you said, if we have a student in third grade coming in and then we're full, but we have a seat in kindergarten and we can take that. So we're gonna send a third grade to the alternate school and the parent has the choice to follow the student, um, the older student. So that is a parental choice thing, uh, thing for me. Uh, we can come up with a lot of different scenarios with the current influx of people that are moving. So I don't think that we can address everyone in an appeal. I don't know what they could appeal, if the Florida statute says we don't have room. We can't appeal that. So I don't know if that would even be a possibility to have an appeal process when it's, we're already full. There's really nothing to debate here. So, I'm comfortable with these, um, changes or additions. I like the fact that we're writing it ourselves instead of somebody else writing it for us, so. And I don't remember even seeing the word shall in here, so that's a good thing too. I just had to bring that up.
Policy then.
Yeah, yeah, we wrote it, so it doesn't have a shall in there, so.
Well, there's no board, board involvement in that.
Right, so, I, I'm good with this. I don't think that it's gonna be as cumbersome as it may appear to be, I don't know.
Yeah, Ms. Fresser?
I just wanna point out, I have no problem with the word shall. I had a problem with the word shall saying, we shall approve it, right? Like saying, no matter what, we have to approve it.
Shall ensure.
That was my problem with the word shall, right? Like, in general, the word shall is fine with me.
Shall recommend, shall maximize, shall.
I'm not typically the one that parses words, just, just not me, obviously, I'm a pretty straight shooter all the time. So like, me parsing a word, like, I'm not really into that, except for when somebody, something says, we shall approve it and I would like to know that I don't have to approve it. So, the word shall is, is all right. I had a couple of questions about this. Is this one also from Seminole? Have you seen this in Seminole before?
This is not the exact language, it is similar, and yes, that, that, we did use this process. Very, very rarely, but we did.
No, this is gonna be, this is so, um, I can only imagine, when you use this, how upset you're gonna have parents. Because I can remember when we've had a rezone and we had the situation that Mrs. Foreman kinda talked about, where we said, okay, well, if you have a child that's already in the school, they can stay, but if you have incoming, whatever, your next child cannot go to that school 'cause now they're zoned for the other school. And there was, there's, there's a lot of upset, because you always envisioned your kids would go to school together and they'd, you know, hold hands while they walked in, and now we're saying, you can't do that at this school. Now, you can do that at the other school, right? But that's not what the parent had envisioned when they bought their house and had their babies and said, oh, my babies are gonna go here, you know? So, you're gonna have really emotional, upset parents when you do this. So I can't imagine any superintendent wanting to do this. There isn't, I can't think of one that I've ever met that goes, yes. This is something I'm siding up to do all the time. Because it's gonna be, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a whole lot of emotion in this room, even though there's nothing on here that we vote for. There's going to be a huge amount of emotion. My request would be, and I'm, and I understand the need for this policy, I don't like this policy, but I understand the need for this policy. My request would be that when this policy is executed, when the superintendent determines that, yes, I need to do this for this school, for this grade level, and you've exhausted everything that you can do, that the board is just notified. Because I do imagine, we will then get that mama, that dad, that grandma, that grandpa, everybody in the whole family then emailing us saying, how dare you, my baby, I bought my house here, I want my baby there with my other baby. And, and I, as a board member, would want to know, we had to do this, here's the things we tried, and this is why we have to do that. It doesn't say we'll be notified, but, and I don't know if it needs to say that, but I am making it really clear, I would like to be notified, I think the board should be notified.
I, I, I think that's a, a very, um, simple sentence we can add to the policy. I, I think that, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Really, the only reason in this option why you, why you can't bring it for board approval is that because of the length of ti- time to the next board meeting and because you're, again, the goal here is not to save any seats, right? It's to fill every desk, add some more, and only when you're completely out of room, um, do you use this. Um, and, and if the next board meeting is, is a week and a half away, there's, you really can't wait, um, uh, to do that. And so, that's why this really has to be an administrative function.
Right, and, and I'm not asking for it to come before the board, just for the board to be notified. I totally understand that you need the, once again, the flexibility and the, uh, to, to be able to do this and I, and I, and I understand that, and, um, I, I do get that. But I just want to be able to know, because I can only imagine, it's either gonna be in District One or District Five where the parent is going to reside. And I think the whole board should know, but I wanna be able to, be able to explain to that parent, well, yes, but here's all the things they tried first, you know? Just so that they are informed, I, I understand you're, you're, you're upset and, and, you know, I would be too and, but, you know, here's all the things the district has tried and, and I would wanna make, and I, I imagine that you would explain that to them as well. But when they get to us, they, they think that they will get an appeal, even if there isn't one here, right? 'Cause they're not gonna read this policy, they're gonna think, I'm gonna go to the school board and I'm gonna tell the school. And I wanna be able to say, but, but I know all the things they've tried. And I, and I know why we're doing this. And I, I wanna be able to explain it once again, so that we are a united front on this. I don't want it to be, you, do you know what I'm saying?
Absol- absolutely, I think it's a, I think it's a great point. Along, and, and along with understanding, um, not just the, you know, wh- what things were tried and why, why we're at this point.
Right.
So I, I think that's a great addition of the policy.
Yeah, and I'll end it with saying, and write to your county commissioner about how they keep approving houses. Um, that's just me. So, I had one question, and it was about number four. And it says, students who have been placed by a class size assignment have a priority for enrollment at, oh, no, it wasn't that one, sorry. It was number five. It says, the parent or guardian of the students may choose to remain at the alternate school for the highest grade available at the school. No transportation is provided after the first year. So my question is, let's say you reassign a student. They were gonna, they came in a month into the school year, there's no room for fourth grade, that was an example given. But the next year, there, presumably, there may not be, I would presume, actually, that if there's no room for fourth grade, there's no room for fifth grade, right? 'Cause that just makes sense, because they're gonna all matriculate up. But let's say, there was room for fifth grade and they said, no, but my kid settled over here. We're gonna say, sorry, we're not gonna transport your kid, we made your kid go here, but now they can go back and they're choosing not to, and we're also not transporting them, is that what we're gonna say?
That, that has been the policy that we've had in the past, yes.
Okay. Let's say that there isn't room for fifth grade, right? Like they make that, 'cause that is probably the more logical option. But this says, they still only get transportation for the first year. Is that, is that, if it's within the two miles, 'cause if it's without the two miles, we're still gonna transport them?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was my only concern, I'm like, well, first saying, you still gotta go there, we better be transporting them if it's within the.
If it's not a choice for the parent, yeah, then we're for high transport.
Okay. My last question is for our attorney. Okay, we've made a zoned map, we said, all these babies are gonna go here. And now we're saying, but this one, this one right here, they're not. 'Cause it's not now, it's not, not, not a whole neighborhood, it is one single child. Does that create a legal liability on us? Can the parent sue us and say, you're discriminating against me because I'm a new resident? You're discriminating against my child because I am a new resident. Does that open us up to lawsuits because of this? Sorry, maybe you're not prepared to answer that, but I'm just, wonder.
So the excluded child, why are they excluded in your example?
Well, they, they would be excluded because of the class size amendment, which is a constitutional amendment, and the Florida statutes that say that we have to follow the class size amendment. So they are being excluded based on those things. Can they say, I am being discriminated against because I'm new? Because you're not saying, this other fourth grader that's been sitting in there, you're saying, this new fourth grader, that's the one that puts us over, they're out. Does that open us up to any kind of lawsuits?
I don't think that's discrimination.
Generally, discrimination is based on your status in a protected class.
Right.
By simply being new or late. By simply being new or late to the game, unfortunately, or, you know, that's not a basis to file a discrimination claim.
You're right. I, you're right. This is not a protected class.
Right.
Is there any other opportunities that I would not be considering that would open us up for suits with this one? You don't think so? I mean, I know anybody could sue for anything, right? But I mean, is there, they could try, right? I get that. But that, this actually would be a, like, a really good sob story in a, in a court case, right? Like, you know? But I just want to know, is there any legal reasons, like legitimate reasons, that we could end up getting sued for this policy if it were to be enacted and a child that is in their zoned school is now not allowed to go there? Can you think of any challenge?
Well, we're never going to say you can't be sued.
I know that. I know, I just said that. I know that they could sue for anything. I'm saying, is there something you feel that would be a legitimate argument? I know that we could get sued. Oh, gosh, I don't want to, maybe you don't want to say the legitimate argued out loud. Can you just say yes or no? Do you feel as if there is something that would be like a legitimate argument, a, a legal argument against this policy?
We have, we have to follow the class size amendment.
Yes.
And we have to follow our own procedures. I mean, if there's some flaw in how it ended up that way, that we didn't follow our own procedures, or
I see that.
Something like that, that would be how you'd probably attack it, if you, but, but if we're following the law, it's just, uh, misfortunate that the growth is outpacing the school sizes.
Okay. So, as long as we have a written procedure, and that procedure is consistently followed.
That's all you can do.
Right.
I mean, one, one of the things is the, the opening paragraph, you know, "The school board authorizes the superintendent." We, we could take a look at adding the alternative impact fee, um, and the class size as exceptions, the same way that we cite the school choice program as an exception, maybe in the last paragraph.
Can you tell me what page that was on the?
Uh, that's first page seventy-nine.
Oh, just the first one, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's right. So, we, we, we could look at adding these two into the exceptions, the same way that the school.
Oh, I see. Except, yeah, yeah.
We could look at modifying that, so that it's in rule and it's recognized.
Okay. Maybe that would be good. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
I just wanted to-
You have one more thing before we go to Ms.?
Right, to, uh, Ms. Messenger's point, at the end, right underneath that class size assignment on the handout, it has a statement below their student assignment or school or program, "The superintendent or designee is authorized to assign a student to any program or school as deemed to be the best interest of the student or school district." So, that's kind of like a disclosure, you might say. Am I correct? Saying that, that, that is covering and encompasses all of these different things. If there's a school that fits that student because of capacity or whatever, I think that's a catch-all, saying that we are covered with our policy. That would be my, I would ask the, the attorneys, am I right in that, that last line on the last page?
I'm sorry, I don't have any-
Page eighty-nine.
That's okay. I just, I just read it. It just says, "Student assignment in school program. The superintendent or designee is authorized to assign a student to any program or school as deemed to be the best interest of a student or school district." That's like a disclosure at the last page. That would, that would almost cover that, "Oh, we have a policy in place that students can be assigned to a program or a school." Right, so, that to me would cover that, "Oh, you could bring legal litigation against us, but we have a policy."
We do.
That the superintendent is deemed. Okay. That's all. I just wanted to point that out.
That, that's actually my question is, maybe I'm missing something here, but we have all these rules and how we're going to zone students into schools, and when we can make exceptions, and then the last line underneath all of that says, "But really, the superintendent can do whatever he feels is in the best interest of a student at any time." Why, why don't we just make the whole policy that? See what I mean? I mean, if that, if you can do that, why do we need anything else?
Well, it's a-
We're just-
Well, I'm sure the superintendent wants to add some coverage.
Well, it's a great question, because I, but, I mean, the policy creates a lot of guardrails, which is a good thing, because you do want to make consistent decisions, and, and you do want to, you know, I, 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 I want the board to be comfortable with what's in the board's policies. Generally, the purpose of that very last sentence, and, and that's in other, many other districts' policies, is that sometimes there are situations where, again, you can't write a rule for every scenario. Sometimes there are judicial, legal, health, safety, welfare things that come up, where you, you just have to decide this student can't be at this school anymore. Um, a- and, and, and again, the goal is to not use that authority. But if it's necessary, it's there. But, but I, but the intent, I, I don't think the intent of the policy is for that to become a, you know, let, let's just move a hundred kids next week. Because we feel like it, right? It, it's because there's some compelling reason, and there's no other mechanism in policy to deal with that issue.
Unforeseen circumstance.
Are there not? With that big book of laws, which I haven't read all of them, you know, but I'm working my way through. Once we zone a student to a, to a school, there aren't rules about they, we, we're required to send them there, or as long as, I mean, let's say that the situation, there is room at a school, but for whatever reason, the superintendent decides, "I don't think your kids should go to that school." You can do that. You, you, you could come up with a reason and say, "It's not in the best interest of your child to go to this school, because whatever, whatever." It's just an odd caveat. We have all these rules and all these laws, and then there's just a line that says, "But really, the superintendent, if he can come up, he or she can come up with a good reason, can put any student in any school or any program if, if there's a, if the best interest of the child is deemed to be so."
And, and again, I think the, the intent is that, that those are for compelling situations. There, there may be an issue between two students where there's a judicial order in place, and there is no way to comply with that order without
Right.
assigning a student to a different school. There are, um, there are, you know, occasional situations where a student is, i- i- is going to face serious discipline, but may return later. But the return of that student to that campus would be so detrimental that you have to have authority to make a change. That's really the intent of that. And, and, and I think the, you know, I think the, the check and, and balance on that, Mr. Tatum, is that on any given board meeting, three board members can hold a superintendent accountable for a bad decision, right? So, I think there's a, again, there's no, there's no intent of, you know, "Let's just use this randomly." That's for those worst-case scenario situations.
I understand that. It's just a, it's an odd phrase. It doesn't say something to the effect of "In compliance with state statute," or "In compliance with DOE rules." It just says, "You can do it whenever you want, as long as you feel it's in the best interest of the child, no matter if there are laws or statutes." It's just an odd phrasing. I, I'm not going to follow my sword for it, but what are your thoughts on that?
Obviously, he can't violate state or federal law in, in doing that. Those laws are, are on top of this and have to be considered. Everything, every board policy is subject to federal law and state law, in compliance with law. And to the extent that anything is, is in these policies is in conflict with those laws, that can't be followed. You have to go with state law. So, if the superintendent were to engage, and I know he wouldn't, but if he were to do something that did violate state law, you know, that, that can't happen. That's not, that's not authorized by this, just because it doesn't say, provided it's in accordance with state or federal law. So, covered in that regard.
That's true. In reading some laws, it usually has language in there, such as notwithstanding section, federal, whatever, you know, the super, okay, it's, I just, uh, I mean, you could just make it the whole policy and be done with the whole thing, but, uh, it was a good discussion, but it's over. I'm not going to follow my sword on it, so.
So, yeah.
Can I beat a dead horse on this?
Sure.
Why does it say that in the best interest of the school or, or the student? Because those can be conflicting, obviously. You know, if he's doing this, it's, it's conflicting, you know, he's doing it pro- hopefully for the, for the benefit of the school district. Isn't that a little strange to put that? I mean, that's, that, that is truly a blanket. It says you can do whatever you want.
Best interest of the student. Well, it says best interest of the student.
Or the district.
Yeah, best interest of the student or the district. I think, I think they're, I think it's to give him the flexibility that maybe it's not the district that needs this change, it's the student.
But if there's-
Or if there are instances where the district needs the change, not the student.
But if there's a challenge, I mean, that, that gives somebody the reason to, that gives someone a basis to say, "He wasn't acting in the best interest of my child."
And a court would have to decide if that's true.
I highly doubt that. This is a lot, this is one of the-
I know this is a one liner.
Like, the last resort of anything. But there, there are going to be places where you, you've got to make a decision on a student.
Right.
It, it could be a lot of things.
I guess, I was going to say, Chairman, and to Mrs. Foreman's point, an example of, you know, something that would be in the best interest of the student that perhaps the, the district would not have a stake in, if you had a family and a parent was in a very sensitive employment situation, and they, and there was a, a concern that their family's safety was at risk. The district would not have any interest there, but it might be in that family's best interest, or that student's best interest, to be assigned to a school that policy wouldn't otherwise authorize. So, again, and, and that's an extreme case, but I'm just giving you an example of why you want to have either or.
All right, I think we are good with that one, um, that policy? So, we can move to the next one. Board, I will say, there is lunch provided. It's like twelve twenty. It, I mean, I, I, I know it's, um, I, we didn't put a whole bunch, I didn't, again, we never know how long this is going to take. So, it's up to you all. I'll do what, what's, what you all want to do. It's in the, it's in the second, it's up on the second floor in the grapevine. Do you want to do a twenty-minute, thirty-minute? Do you want to eat it, grab it, and come down and proceed?
I'd rather take a break. I'm not a big fan of jumping into the microphone with my-
What do you want to do? I'm, I, I'm-
I don't care.
Okay, let's just, well, we can take a twenty-minute break. Let's say twenty-five, twelve forty-five. We'll come back and, uh, follow up with the next one.
All right, welcome back. No falling asleep after we meet lunch, as we talk about fund balance. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chapman, floor George.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time, we're going to review the two policies that are somewhat related to each other. 6235, titled Fund Balance, and 6233, District Budget. So 6235, Fund Balance, is really the main one. 6233 was edited because of 6235. So we'll start with 6235, and I'm going to call up my colleague here. It's a colleague day. Our Deputy Superintendent of Finance here, Rachel Sellers. Sellers.
Well, good morning, y'all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Sounded very southern just then. So anyhow, well, the changes have been made in regards to the main one is the second paragraph, basically talking about the reserve percentages and the ones that are required by the state, ones that we had for the policy set by the board, the other target of 5%, the state being 3%. And so, so we had the language here where that general fund reserve, not classified as restricted, committed, or non-spendable, of at least 5%, that was the part that was, we had the board policy. So we've changed a little to clarify that to include the 3% statutory reserve that the state has required, and then 2% for strategic reserve. And we've added also an additional line, or item, an additional contingency fund of up to 3.5%, which would actually be 8.5%. And this is added here as a for, a sound financial management decision for us to be able to target. So as in the past, as we've been bringing the financial statements to the board, and back at June 30, 2023, when we were looking at, sitting at that percent of that reserve fund balance, it was 13, you know, and a half percent at that time. And there was concern that it had gotten too high, but it was also looking in the future, knowing it was high. In comparison, we saw several other school boards, or the majority of the school boards, also were high in those reserves at June 30, 2023, large part in due to the CARES, ESER money that all of the school districts got. So, so the superintendent and I had discussed the, the target to be 8.5%. If the district were to be higher than that, there would probably be discussions that we would have with the board members to decide if there was a desire or appetite to even have a committed reserve for future shortfalls, like recessions, things like that, which is something that some school districts, once I got to analyzing some of the districts throughout the state that were comparable to us, did have some reserves in addition to consideration of this general fund reserve balance. Because remember, the general fund reserve balance is assigned plus unassigned. Some districts actually did reserve for, had a strategic reserve, or a reserve for projected shortfalls, or, you know, contingency shortfalls. So, and Saint, so Saint John's and Collier both come to my mind that when I compared, saw that they had done that. Now, that wasn't something that the district here decided to do when the ESER funds started coming in. So hence, you could see that there was a percentage increase. A lot of school boards also did not commit those extra funds, so other, other school districts also had higher percentages at that time as well. So anyhow, so you can see the language here in Policy 6235, where we have reworded that. And then some of the other dialogue, or items below, the paragraphs below, the applicable categories were repetitive, so we made those changes. So, do you guys have any discussion in regards to the projected changes?
The only thing, only thing I will say is, we're talking with Dr. Weisong. I think it's good to have a, a target range where we want to hit. Otherwise, how do you plan for something, right? I mean, you can't just have the floor of five, and that's the floor, and you want, you want somewhere where, because we all may have a different opinion on what's too much in a fund balance, or what's too little, right? So I do, I do like having the floor and saying up to 3.5%. My, my concern is twofold. One, I don't want the, and I talked with Dr. Weisong about this, and one of my concerns is, I don't want the, during the budget process, to feel like we've got to cut positions, funding for projects, etc., to make sure we're still in that 8.5, right? So to make, just, and I, because it is a target. So if it's 7.5 one year, and maybe it's seven the next, and it's eight the next, I understand we want to be in that, that 5 to 8.5. But I don't want to get into a budget presentation and say, you know, we're losing, we're having to cut this, or lose this, or in dire, because we got to be in this 8.5, right? So, so I want to, I just, I just want to make sure, I'm just one of five, that that's not the case, that we're not looking at, we got to cut X amount of teachers, or funding, or whatever, because we got to stay in this 3.5 range, right? Obviously, we don't want to go below 5, and we can't go below 3. So that's my first thing. Second, my second thing is, is I agree with having the, the ceiling as well of 8.5, because in my personal opinion, philosophically, I do not believe that government should hold taxpayer money. And I do believe we should have some kind of a fund balance, don't get me wrong, when, and not only they will, but when they, when things do decline, or something happens. But I don't believe in, in hoarding and, and keeping our taxpayer money, especially when, by the glass for a referendum, again, right? So I like, I like having a place, though, for you, and not only, and not only yourself, but also Dr. Weisong, to have a target to hit, which is that, that 5 to 8.5 range, right? That's where we want to hit. But, but again, my biggest concern is, I don't want to lose positions, or programs, etc., because we're trying to stay in that, that range, if that makes sense. And that's a year-to-year basis, right? I mean, that's, we can't talk, we can't talk now about what we're going to do in two years, or next year, we don't even know, right? So, but that's just my thought in the policy. I'm okay with it being in our policy, because it does give you a target. But that's just, those are, those are my, so I'm okay with the policy as it is, but those are my thoughts. Board members, anybody want to talk? Ms. Form?
I'm happy. I really am. I think it's well thought out. You know, I've, I've come back from seminars, and where we talked about reserve funds in other districts, and went, holy cow, we have, we are way below, we should be. And I met with resistance on that early on, but perhaps it's ESER fu, lack of ESER funding that's got people a little more concerned, or taking it a little more seriously, but, but yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. I love how you laid out. 3% is rock bottom. The sky is going to fall. 5% is okay, but let's, let's try for 8.5. And I, I'm just, I'm very happy with it, and I thank you.
I have a question. So the general fund this year, the expected expenditures are approximately how much this?
So, the, the reserve that we are looking at, that I've been discussing with you guys, as of the last, the board meeting where the amendments came to, but in our one-on-ones that I have been discussing, projections, if we were to go all the way to June 30, 2024, as we're standing right now, we were looking at 3 point, sorry, 8.32 was going to be that reserve.
So my, I'm sorry, Ms. Sellers, my question was, is, what is the overall general, but you'd think I would know this off the top of my head. I mean, I have an idea in my mind, but the overall general budget for this year, general operating budget?
The ending?
No, 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 the whole, how much money were, were expected to, 600 million, somewhere around that area?
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. I have that. I have that. Expenditures of about, yeah, 593,000, about 600,000.
Hundred million?
Sorry, sorry, million.
I wish it were that low.
Yeah.
Lower taxes a whole lot. We can get 20 bucks from everybody in the county, and we're good.
Yes, right.
So the reason I ask that is, so if you do, let's see if I, if I do my, so 10% of 600 million is 60 million, so 8.5% is about 50 million, or somewhere around there. That's, that's how much, but just let me finish. So I'm just trying to think in my mind, if, if a Cat 5 hurricane comes through and wipes out a lot of our schools, and I guess a lot of that would be, rebuilding schools would be a capital expenditure, I would assume somehow. So that's not general fund expenditures, but we have to buy computers, and desks, and chairs, and all kinds of equipment. Are we, do we have any insurance for the, like I have homeowner's insurance. Do we have like school insurance?
There is, there is insurance.
Okay.
For the, for the, for the buildings, and the furniture, so there is property insurance for the district that we work through with risk management, so.
So what types of things then would, and maybe Dr. Weisong could roll on on this too, if there was a Cat 5 hurricane that came through, and things that aren't covered by insurance, you know, $60 million, what would we do with half of that, at least, and, you know, what, what would we do with that? If we're insured, and we have money to cover those kind of things, what do we, what, what would we want to have this 60 million in a reserve fund for?
So we would still have an awful lot of upfront costs, right when that would happen. Displacing students to other locations that were working, finding other places you would temporarily set up. So many of those funds would be some of the things that the capital projects wasn't picking up, that we would need to do. Or there's also a wait time, you know, that kind of a thing. So those expenditures would need to be handled upfront by the school district to be able to make that, the operations to continue. And, and to part of your point, too, we had been working with the, with our budget director, and you could assess about 5.2 million probably equals 1% currently with what we're looking at. So when you're, when you're doing the, the game, the, the calculations of looking at the reserve percentage where you want to be, those were giving you an idea. For example, like this year, ESER is about 12 million in personnel, and another close to 8 in instructional materials, so you're looking at 20 million. So there's 2%, you know, right there. So that gives you an idea of what you kind of want to plan for, for the future, for those reduction in revenues. uh, reduction in revenues and for the lack of, or la- lag of, of funding, that kind of thing.
Sure.
So, and, and just to add to that, and, and I think this is the, you know, the, the, the challenging part to remember, you have this, whatever the fund balance is, you've got a number there, but the first three percent of that is really totally locked away, right? Because if we dip into that last three percent, we're in a financial emergency and, and all kinds of things start happening. So, uh, so there's a certain amount of that money that, that will never be touched. It's really the two percent strategic reserve that's gonna, that, that's proposed here that would, that would cover some of these unknown things. And I mean, it could be a natural disaster, but it could also be, um, um, a flat state funding year, but the board still wants to do something for employees because of, you know, rising CPI or whatever. It could be, um, that fewer students show up, uh, uh, than, than what was projected, in which case we get an adjustment to our funding in January, um, that impacts the budget and, and to the chairman's point, you don't want to be letting people go, you know, mid-year, you want to be able to absorb that hit and then adjust for the next year. So it's not just those natural disasters, it's, it's all the complexities of the, of the funding formula. And that's why, um, you know, that, that target of eight point five, to the chairman's point, it, it may not be eight point five, it may be that the best we can do is five or six percent. But that gives us a range to try to work within in the, in the budget development process.
I'm just trying to help myself and even the public understand why we would want that much money in the fund, and you make a good point, about three percent of it is our statute of tolerer, we have to keep three percent, so that really only gives us five point five percent to work with.
Well, it, it'd be a range, right, of two percent
Yeah.
to five point five percent, and it, and it, it could be, and, and, and there could be a year where even the two percent is very difficult and that, that's why the, that's why I think the, what we drafted here says, these are our targets, and if we can't meet these for any reason, then we're gonna provide the board a written report of why. The same thing, and again, I think this would be unlikely, but, um, there might, there could even be a reason to go above eight point five. If, for example, we knew that because of a legislative mandate that takes effect in two or three years, we were gonna have a large spend, we might want to save up for that and then spend down in one year. So it's just, I think it's just about, you know, prudent planning.
For instance, let's say the state said, we're not gonna pay for transportation anymore. That's all on you, the county. I mean, that's an example of something that you're talking about where the state might come down and say, you know what? We're not gonna pay that anymore. We think it's a luxury. If you want to do that in your county, you're gonna have to find the money yourself. That's kind of what.
I mean, it, it certainly could be. Another example would be, we know that there, the, we know that there's legislation that um, changes all of the, um, school start times, starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven. There may be some structural expenses that go with that. It, it may end up being revenue neutral, um, but there are some who think that it is gonna cost, and so that might be something that we would need to save up for so that we don't, you know, deal with that all at once. So I think, and, and that's why you want some flexibility in what that target number is.
I'm in favor of this. I'm just trying to educate myself, as maybe some of the people who watch for financial purposes and tax purposes and village purposes to understand some of the finer points of what we're discussing here, though. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. That's all I got. Yep.
Anybody else?
No, I'm, I'm good with this.
All right. Thank you very much.
And did you want to do the budget, the budget one?
Yeah, just to make sure.
Okay, so, policy, are you putting them up on the board? Um, I'm sorry.
You talk, I'll, I'll, I'll scroll.
So, um, the budget, um, balance of policy, that's just, uh, uh, an additional adjustment because it needs to agree to, to the other, um, policy, sixty-two thirty-five. So in this one, it actually talks, uh, again, uh, details out the three percent and five percent, um, that is to be, um, planned for, and then the additional contingency of the other three point five percent. Note down in, in, in B, the implementation of the budget, they did change the name of the allocation of the SAI to educational enrichment. That one was adjusted as well. And then in C, um, uh, we just, um, uh, deleted some of the repetitive, um, language that was in that paragraph.
I got nothing. I knew just kind of the same thing coming over. Anything?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chapman?
Well, we made it to the last one, uh, policy twenty-five twenty. This one gets a special PowerPoint presentation by our other deputy superintendent, uh, of instruction and curriculum.
All three gets a max.
Derek Jensen. Yeah, yeah, I'll tell ya. Working the whole team here. So, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Chair Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong. As Dr. Weisong said, kind of at the beginning of our board policy discussion, you know, some of these have been informed by, or some of the staff suggested chan- changes have been informed by, you know, the last few months of, of feedback we've been receiving from community stakeholders. And I know that, you know, my, uh, some of these suggested revisions to twenty-five twenty kind of, um, are aligned to what I've heard from library media specialists, uh, community members, school principals, the curriculum team, board members, you know, as I've, uh, as I've become more familiar with manatee's process, it may be some, some opportunities to, to move that process forward. The reason, um, twenty-five twenty is coming to you is, as I was workshopping, um, originally, we're gonna bring a revised procedure for you to approve, but as I was workshopping that with council, council identified that really the statutory language indicates that the procedure for the challenge process or the objection process should be integrated into the policy. And so that's why we're bringing that integrated into the policy with you. This is also an opportunity to just, um, add some of the Neola language that aligns with some of the more recent statutory updates as well. And so what I've done in the PowerPoint is, it's really just the language from the, the draft policy you have in front of you. I've just kind of split it up into chunks so that we can process it, uh, a bit at a time. I can get your feedback and then we can go to the next piece, if that's okay with you. So the very first piece, uh, the very first change is just the definition of library media center. This comes from Neola. And this aligns with, um, state statute and the definition of what constitutes a library media center. More specifically, the most recent legislation really included classroom libraries into the definition of library media center, which is why you see that reflected there. This is also a Neola language, and, um, it just identifies some of the roles and responsibilities of the principals, in particular that they're responsible for overseeing compliance with district procedures, uh, which is what principal policy is, for selecting school library media center materials, um, and for notifying parents of the process for objecting to the use of specific materials as well. So really principals, you know, are kind of the, just like they're the heads of their campuses, they're responsible for the library media collections on their campuses.
So, Mr. Jensen, in, in the, the last line there in that part that says, principals are responsible for overseeing compliance with district procedures for selecting school library materials, I mean, the, the point was brought up, I believe, by the public commenter about principals are making the decisions, are we gonna get to that a little later here? Am I asking this question prematurely? Are, are we in compliance with, I think the public commenter said something to the effect of principals are now making these decisions, but that's not right. Some of, some of the higher, higher authorities should be doing it, or?
So, um, the whole curation of a school library media center is, is a multifaceted, complex process. We are obligated, um, to have all books that are entering our media specialists selected by someone who holds a certification in library media. All of our schools have media specialists. We also have a district certified media specialist. So that media specialist is selecting materials, but ultimately those purchase orders and the selection of that also flows through the principal, so they have to be selected by the media specialist, but the principal also has to sign off on those materials. And so that's kind of how they're, they're added to the, the school collection. The eject- objection process is a little bit different, which we can talk about when we kind of get into the nuances of the objection process, but when it comes to, um, kind of selecting, where it says selecting school library materials, those are kind of selected by someone who has a, a, a media specialist credential. But obviously, the principal is in charge of the budget for their school. They're in charge of, um, you know, what materials are entering their school as well, and so it, it's kind of a, a process they work together in tandem on.
I understand. Thank you.
This is a, um, small change, and this is in the, the part of the policy that deals with, um, instructional materials adoption process. So this is, um, like, like we're currently going through with social studies, the formal process for, for adopting instructional materials. The previous sentence said that we must have committees that include parents of, of students in our district, which is something we've done. It's a great practice. The state slightly modified the language to say, um, students who will have access to such materials. That essentially means we, we try our best to make sure that, um, parents, like if, if we're selecting for middle school textbooks, we have a middle school parent involved in the, you know, a, a parent of a middle school student involved in that committee, so that they're selecting materials that their child will have access to. And then this is the beginning of the section. This language is the beginning of the section, which includes the challenge policy, policy. This is also, um, the Neola language. So this is just slightly, um, changing the title. And it indicates also that the board will adopt and publish on its website the process for a parent to limit his or her student's access to materials in the school or classroom library. This is, um, another new state requirement for this year. The current process and manatee is kind of handled at the school level. I'm working with our, um, focus team to centralize this and, and create kind of a, a district standardized procedure by which a parent will be able to go into focus and then limit access to either the school library or the classroom library, and then that will be, uh, reflected in our school library media system and, and the, you know, teacher and principal will be notified so that if a parent chooses to restrict access for their child to either one of those two classroom libraries, they can do so at a central location and focus very easily. Any questions about this piece? And then this is the, um, the actual objection language. So, again, it, we changed it to school or classroom because that was part of the statutory changes. And then, um, this also aligns, this is Neola language aligned to the new state language that our process and objection form, which are easy to read and understand, are accessible on the homepage of the district's website. Ms. D'Agostino has worked with me carefully on, on what, what is easy to read and understand and what is not easy to read and understand. And, um, again, you see the language about, um, being made available in a school or a classroom library. Again, clarifying that a classroom library is part of the school's media center collection. And then this is the part that, um, should appear in purple for you. These are the changes that, um, reflect my proposed updates to our actual district procedure. So, um, I believe it was January or February this year, um, a, a procedure was bought, brought to the board for, um, approval, which has been used and is, is the procedure we're currently operating under. Kind of articulated the, um, process by which a, um, parent can make an objection request, or parent or resident can make an objection request. And, um, it was kind of labeled as the district reconsideration procedure. These updates are, um, really kind of an evolution of that procedure based on some feedback I've received. And obviously, we'll continue to iterate on that based on, on, on your feedback, and we're obviously continuing to still receive community feedback on this as we advertise this policy. So, I'll just kind of, you know, the original procedure, um, really had, um, two parts to it. And what we're currently operating has two main parts to it. If a resident fills out our reconsideration form or the objection form, and we're gonna start using the word objection in our, our forms and everything as we move over to mirror the state language, it would go to the schools. It's sent out to all the schools that have that book in their media center collection. The curriculum team manages that. Those schools conduct an independent review led by the principal. Principal's consulting with the media specialist, other stakeholders at the school. The school makes a determination, reports that back to us. We aggregate those and send them to the, um, to the original objector as the school-based decisions. The second part of our current procedure is if the original objector is unhappy with the school-based decisions, they can appeal to the school board. And then it, um, goes to the school board for consideration following the hearing procedures set forth in twenty-five twenty, essentially. So, that's kind of the process, um, as it was. This is a similar process, and you'll notice that there's one notable change, which is kind of a second layer of review that can happen in between those two events, which is what I'll walk you through. So, um, the first part is, um, that parents and residents of the county now must make any objection by utilizing the standard objection form adopted by the State Board of Education. So, very recently, the State Board of Education released the standard template for obje- uh, for instructional materials objections. We're gonna be migrating to that form along with, um, the approval of this policy. And so that is a, it's a, it's maybe three pages in length. It is very similar to our existing form in a lot of substantial ways, but it, you know, the parent identifies, parent resident identifies the rationale for their objection, what book their objection, objecting to, identify some other critical details, um, but it's a standardized form, so now we're moving to that form and requiring that parents use that form in order to submit an objection. That form will also contain the district's point of contact and contact information for the submission of the form, which we already provide. And then, like in our current policy, which has each school review the book, the district point of contact will notify the school or schools that have that material in their inventory. Those submitted documents are shared with principals. And then, um, on the next slide, we'll talk kind of about the school review process. But also, um, some standardized language that goes in here is also from the state, which is that if the material is being objected to on the basis that it's pornographic or prohibited under eight four seven oh one two, or just, uh, to include some other terminology, then we must immediately remove it from the classroom library shelves pending the outcome of the review. And so, um, that, that's pulled within five days, and we've been complying with that since the beginning of the year. So that's been part of our objection process. Do you have any questions or comments about this slide in particular, this language? Yes, ma'am?
I just want to double check the, um, uh, the provision that it depicts, um, sexual conduct as defined in eight forty-seven point zero zero one nineteen. Does that, is that a requirement to take it out in five days?
Yes.
Okay. But if it, if they're objecting under, it's not suitable or it's inappropriate?
Age inappropriate, yeah.
Those, those don't have to come off?
Correct.
Okay.
But if, if they check one of the, it's essentially on the new state template, it's five boxes. I think the first box is that it's pornographic. The second is that it's, um, actually, I have it right here.
Eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven. The third is that it's, you know, the other one, and then it's age inappropriate or, you know, not able to comprehend it. So, if they pick essentially one of the last two boxes, we wouldn't remove it from the shelves pending review, but if they pick one of the first three, we would remove it from the shelf pending review. So this is the, um, part of the procedure that, uh, articulates kind of the, the school level review procedure. Um, and this mirrors our current procedure quite closely. So the principal of the school with the identified material, or if the, um, principal chooses, they, he or she may designate a committee, you know, to inform the SAC of the objection, review the challenge books or materials, review the, um, objection form, consult professional review or academic resources, um, and determine the extent to which it meets those criteria for, uh, selection. And then they must, um, and in this revision, um, we articulated a ninety-day, um, window for the school to conduct the review. They must inform the curriculum department and me what the school level review is, and then within that ninety days, and oftentimes it happens much quicker than that, um, we return the, um, decision back to the original objector. You can also see that then, and we'll talk about the next stage in the process on the next slide, if the objection is not resolved to the owner if the objection is not resolved to the owner of objector satisfaction, they may submit a request in writing to the deputy superintendent of instructional services, me, for a district level review. The written request must be submitted within thirty days, the complainant receiving notification of the school-based decision, and only the original complainant may appeal a prior decision. Yes, sir?
So the first line on this slide here, the principal at each school with the identified material or a committee designated, this will be one from Ms. DiAgostino, I believe, or both of our lawyers. So I actually am looking at the statute, appears to be this Florida statute, twenty, year twenty twenty-three. It's chapter one oh six, section twenty-eight. It says down here on number five, down the way. Meetings of committees convene, convened for the purpose of resolving an objection by a parent or resident to specific materials must be noticed and open to the public in accordance with twenty-eight. So if, if it's just a principal is doing, so if, if a principal is doing it, it wouldn't have to be open to the public? But if a committee is doing it, it would have to be open to the public?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the principal obviously is still consulting with media specialists, teachers, other stakeholders, potentially, you know, community members, their SAC about the, the objection as well as their, their decision-making process around it. But this, this language, if they wished to form a committee to evaluate the book, that would take place in the sunshine, otherwise it would not.
Are we not in, I was for you, ma'am, are we not kind of quibbling in that? Well, we didn't designate a committee, but the principal went and talked to SAC and, and the teachers and the parents. And it's, it, it's an informal committee, but we didn't call it a committee, so we don't have to sunshine it.
Well, it wouldn't be a committee at that point. Either, either you delegate the authority to the principal to make the decision alone, and he consults with who he chooses to consult with. Or, or makes the decision, you know, unilaterally, and he's gotta do at least some consultations. But the statute is very clear that only meetings of committees, meetings of committees. And so if it, it's not a committee, if he simply consults with outside sources and makes the decision alone. But if he does choose to form a committee, then that would have to happen in the sunshine.
If he has a meeting with three teachers and two parents and his assistant principal, and they all sit down around a table and...
Him soliciting input from multiple sources and making the, the decision pursuant to the policy on his own would not constitute a committee.
Okay.
If he creates a committee, then it has to be in the sunshine.
That's what I would call substance versus form. That's, if we don't adhere to the requirement of public notice and public, you know, operating in the sunshine, we set ourselves up for some really serious problems if stuff is challenged. And for that reason, and I'll go into what I, you know, the problems I have with this whole process in here. But, um, but I think we've got to really protect ourselves. And because this is stuff that's, that is ending up in courts. It could end up in front of a special magistrate, and magistrate would say, you know, is there to determine, not only did we follow our process, do we have a process, did we follow it? But if, if, but if we violate law, in his opinion, we, you know, he could, uh, he could rule against us too. So I, I, you know, the idea that a principal can, can run around and talk to other people, I think is a really bad idea, but...
Hello, Mr. Dyer, you're, you're the board attorney, what are your, what's your take on this one?
I agree with, uh, general counsel. At least as the law is right now, the sunshine only implies if a committee is formed by the principal.
Okay.
But if the principal remains the sole party determining, that's not sunshine.
Can I, I'll jump in, 'cause this is interesting, part of it, about it, is that I feel like if it's, if a principal gets an assistant principal, an English teacher from the school to help weigh in, but they are ultimately making the decision, that's the key. Or is it an actual committee that's making the decision? And the principal's just gonna follow the committee's decision? I think that's the distinction. Doesn't matter if they get the whole school involved or not to poll, and then they make the final decision, that's not a committee. But if they say, we're gonna bring a committee to make the decision for me, and I'm gonna follow it, that's the committee. I think that, to me, is the distinction, and so, I mean, not that, not that it won't.
And, and if you look at the language of the statute that you just read, meetings of committees convened for the purpose of resolving an objection. Now, I, a, a principal might poll various people who have expertise on analyzing a particular objection, and he might take their input. But that's not for the purpose of resolving the objection, he's getting their input. But if he's the sole decision maker, then that statute isn't implicated because he hasn't convened a committee. He's simply doing research to inform his decision. But if a committee is involved, and that committee's job is to make the determination, then that has to happen in the sunshine. And this, I, I think the intent of, of what's here is there are some decisions which a principal might very quickly and expeditiously be able to make that determination. And then there are other decisions where it's a more complex process, depending on the book and the nature of the objection. And so I think this is kind of like we were talking about before. On a case-by-case basis, a principal can look at this and say, this is clear as day, there's no need to have a committee. The, the decision is, is something simple and quick, and I can make it without having to go through the burden for the district to convene a committee for every single book. But then obviously when there's a gray area, or if it's something, you know, more extensive, he's gonna convene a committee, and then the committee is gonna be in the sunshine and perform the analysis. Is there anything I'm saying that's off, Mr. Jones?
I would agree with that analysis.
Okay, this is my main, main object, objection to having the principal do it. The days of a principal being able to make decisions on what's in their library. I mean, I get that, and, and I've been told that all along, but those days are gone. A principal is, if there is an objection, the principal is gonna be subject to, uh, scrutiny. They're gonna need to document things, they're gonna need to, um, to take certain steps as outlined in the procedure. One thing not even mentioned in this procedure is that they're supposed to read the book. You know, um, that, that disturbs me. But I have witnessed, and, and, uh, the public commenter commented about the SAC meetings, because I've been attending SAC meetings, and no, they, they do mention them at SAC meetings. What they, um, what I'm seeing are principals acting out of, I don't know whether it's fear, resignation, overwhelmed with time, you know, what, what the motivation is, but their, their inclination is to just pull it and be done with it. And that's not for the benefit, that's not necessarily good for the district, whether that's a good decision or not. The other thing is by having, if you've got a book at six schools, okay? And having a principal at each school go through this is a duplication of effort. If you, um, designate one principal to lead a committee, okay? Because I don't wanna see the committee, the public, the public input, the, uh, the sunshine, the transparency. I don't wanna see us lose that. But if, um, if they, if, you know, you could, you could, you could allocate, you could, okay, this one's yours, you know, it's your turn, you're up, you're on deck. And let them do one book, you know, to, to save time. Because if a book is objectionable in one library, it should be objectionable all, all across the district. You know, and if a principal is making, leading a committee and making a decision or based in their school, um, but they know it's going to impact three other high schools, they're gonna seek the input, they're, they're gonna talk to those principals, every, every, you know. I would not, I would not make a decision on behalf of all of the other principals. So that's all I'm gonna say on that. I just, I, I, I do not like, number one, putting it on the principal, the sole decision. Because they're going to, who knows how they're gonna decide. I don't like it being each principal, um, so anyway.
I can, um, certainly clarify number two. If, uh, you, we had review the challenge books or materials, but if you like to make that more explicit, to read,
Read and.
We could, you know, certainly change that language. I think when we get to kind of the second part of that, that like extra layer we've inserted at the district level review, I can speak a little bit about the rationale behind that extra layer being, being part of what you spoke of around, um, that like, you said you've received feedback that it's, you know, people might be afraid of the consequences of, of what they're doing, so they might be more inclined to err on the side of pulling a material instead of conducting a more detailed review. I think that was some of the, some of the rationale behind that second part of the policy, so I'll talk about the rationale behind that then. And then also, uh, I'd actually be very interested in, and I appreciate you mentioning the piece about the different decisions and reviews at different school sites. I'd actually be very interested in kind of greater input from the board around that. So right now, we have a kind of hyper-localized initial part of the review process where we treat each school as having their own contexts, their own communities, and therefore making their own decisions around how they would like to proceed with a book in their collection. There are many districts that, um, have a more centralized form of review where, you know, either one school, you know, if, if four schools have the book in their collection, one of those schools is identified for conducting the review, and they do conduct the initial review process. And that is the kind of across-the-board decision at that level. So I'd just be interested in, in feedback around that as well, if anyone has any.
Real quick question, and I, I know you've got a question too. So when we're, when we're talking about worried about the principal making the decision to pull it or not on objection, the principal has the final say on the initial purchase of all books in the classroom, or in the, their library anyways, correct?
Correct.
Now, you could say, well, hey, this principal's new, and they didn't make this purchase of this book. Obviously, if it was purchased five years ago, and their principal now in the last three years, or something like that. But they're already the judge, the juror, the executioner, so to speak, when it comes to the initial purchases. So what's the difference in this, right? I mean, if they're, if they're, from the beginning, if they're saying you're, this is what's allowed to come into my school right this minute, as we go in the next school year, we're gonna order books, there's no difference in saying this is what gets out of my school right this minute. I mean, to me, those are the, two of the same things. If you're, if you're gonna be the, the end-all, be-all, to have them come in and what you're gonna purchase in your library, you should be the end-all, be-all, what's gonna be in your classroom or in your, your, your school or not. Now, that's a whole different story, if you wanna go centralize and do it across the board, that's a whole different story. But if we're gonna keep it localized, like you say, at each school, they already decide what comes in, so why not decide what goes out? It is my, my take, Ms. Spray?
Okay, I just wanted to address Mr. Tatum's comment about a committee. Seeking the opinion of staff and/or parents from that particular school is exact that seeking an opinion or whatever, have a conversation about it. If they don't want to be the end-all, they could form a committee. So that would be the dividing line, okay? I'm not gonna be the end-all, I'm gonna form a committee made up of these members to review this, come back and make, just like the superintendent does, us make the recommendations. So I wanted to make that distinction. But I also, um, to me, there's a, we have a Florida statute that tells us what we can and cannot have. And as stated in the previous slides, free of this, that, and the other, is all I'm gonna say. One school may say this, that, and the other is acceptable, while the other one says it is not. So that's where I have the problem, that's my gray area. If it, if it, uh, go against the statute at one school, it should probably go against the statute at all schools. And not just a principal's decision or even a committee from that school, uh, recommendation. Right here, consult professional review and academic resources. So there again, to Mr., your point, consult. They're not, and if, yeah, if there was a committee, it would have to be in the sunshine like every other committee we have. But when you're asking an opinion, uh, I don't think it qualifies as having to be in the sunshine. The principal, we're striking a principal will review. If the objection is not resolved in the justice, the complaint may submit a request in writing to the deputy superintendent. So it would go to you.
Correct, and the reason that was added is because we currently have multiple different forms for the different levels of review.
Right. Right.
This means we would just use one form, and if you wanted to appeal, you would just send a letter indicating that you wanna appeal.
Okay, I just wanted to make note of that as well, but till we get further down, I'm, I'm good with just that.
We kind of stopped, we kind of went off when you were asking questions, do you have anything else?
Does the, does the form have a, a school on it, like this book in this, or this, this material in this, at this school?
Yes, they identify, I believe, uh, what school. But we also, when we receive the, the formal form indicating that there's a challenge in a way, our district library media specialist, um, looks in our inventory system and identifies all schools that have that material.
Okay, so Mrs., Mrs. Jones fills out the form and says, I object to book X, Y, Z, and it's in five different high schools.
Correct.
And so five different principals go through this process. Four of the principals pull it, the fifth principal, principal says, no, it stays. Then the objector, in theory, could come to you and say, I object that it's still at this fifth high school. And then you, do you resolve it, or does it come to the board for?
Currently, it comes to the board.
Okay.
Um, in this revised policy, it would come to me at that next level of appeal.
But you, do you make a decision, or do you, are you just making your?
We'll get to that on the next slide, but I, yes, I would make a decision as well. And then if they disagreed with my decision, it would then come to the board.
Okay, so there is a way to kind of standardize it across the district, which is basically either you or the board. If the, if the objector says, hey, I want it out of all the schools, they can, then they can elevate that to a higher level than the principal, is that?
Correct. So I, again, it depends on how much agreement you want at the first level of review. If you want that first level of review to, to result in the same decision made across all schools, then we would either have to select a singular school site committee or other vehicle and to, to conduct that review and make it on behalf of, of schools. Or we'd have to modify the procedure to, um, have a more centralized district level of control. But that would also change the amount of resources needed at the district level.
Yeah, once, and once you do the centralized process, then that, you'd probably have to have a committee for that, I, I would think, if you wanted it one.
If we were doing like an initial review at the district level, um, I mean, it, I think there's a lot of different vehicles to do it, and I think if you look at different districts, you'll see, uh, different vehicles of accomplishing.
Trying to avoid the sunshine issue, if it, if we go that, if we would decide to go that route, like, okay, it's, we're just gonna elevate it above the principals and decide it at some district level, then that's gonna be a committee maybe, or I don't know, but anyway, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Just one thing, based on the, the discussion about district-wide. Recall that one of the things that needs to be analyzed is whether it's inappropriate for the grade level and the age group for which the material is being used. So an objection to a book that's in an elementary school might be a valid objection, but the same objection to that book in a high school, that might be a reason to say, hey, it's objectionable here, but it's not objectionable here. So just something to think about.
You'd have to do it by.
Right, so if you said district-wide, you, you know, you have to think about it.
I mean, all.
All elementaries, all middle schools, I understand that.
DiAgostino, uh, makes an excellent point. When we, um, when schools make decisions on books, and we make decisions on books, um, they can either be, uh, removed, they can be restricted, which means, restricted with parental consent, which means they essentially are, are, um, held behind the circulation desk. And then if a student would like to check out that book, we just require parent consent in order to check out that book. It can be restricted by age band, so it could be, you know, middle school. Schools choose to remove it from their media centers, but high schools choose to. Schools choose to remove it from their media centers, but high schools choose to keep it because that's more age-appropriate. Or it could be, you know, kept with no restrictions, in which case it's just left on the shelves at whatever schools it's at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question. The middle of this page, it says, "Within ninety days of the receipt of the formal challenge, the deputy superintendent of instruction," surprise, that's you, "will communicate, um, the school decision to the complaint in all schools, principals, and community stakeholders." In this sentence, who are the community stakeholders that are gonna be communicated to?
Um, this reflects the fact that we maintain a library materials website where all the book decisions are updated, so that anyone in our community can access, um, what books have been objected to and the decisions on those books via our website.
Okay.
And so that, I would say that is our, our mechanism for community, um, notification of, of the decisions made.
Okay. I was just kinda curious, like, how, I didn't, I wanted to understand what that meant. Um, when it came down to, it's, 'cause you would ask for feedback about the, whether it's better to do per-school, or district-wide, or whatever. Um, I've, I've kind of always been the camp of, I think it should be left up to every school, only because I've taught in rural schools, and I've taught in inner-city schools. They're both Title I, but they're both, were culturally different and significant. And so, I've always, I've always kinda been on the mindset of, you know, it's nice to have them, so that each school can kinda determine what's best for themselves. But, in hearing some of the other conversations I've heard about duplication of services, I really hate that idea. So, is your idea more that, let's say someone at a, a school objected to a book. Maybe the other schools didn't get an objection, just the one. The concept, or there could be three, whatever. There could, the concept of, probably somebody's objecting to one, they're probably sending it out to all of them, aren't they? Right? Okay. So, let's, let's say there's three. Okay. Is the concept then that one school would do the objection, or is the concept then that instead, it would be someone hired at the district level to review those and make the determination for the schools, taking it out of the principal's hands? Which one were you looking more to, or are you just looking for feedback on which one we like better, or?
I think, I mean, ultimately, I, I would like to have a process that works as best as it can for all stakeholders. That's, um, easy and, uh, effective for our principals to implement.
Yeah.
So that we're consistent in our practices. And that kind of provides multiple levels of review if there are, if there are issues at any level. So, I mean, if there is a, a way to where, you know, we could use a very similar structure to this, but if there's a school-level review that's initiated across multiple sites, we selected one of those sites to conduct the review, and they did it on behalf of the other schools, I think that would be a, I think that would be one possibility, an effective way to do that. I think if you had a book, for example, that was at a, maybe we had a book that was objected to, and it's at, not just at high schools, but maybe it's at four elem- four middle schools and four high schools, maybe pick a middle school and a high school to conduct the review to determine the appropriateness per level for that book. And then that could potentially be the school-based decision, still allowing for the opportunity for a district-level appeal if there's a, um, if the objector finds issue to challenge the, the decision made at the school level.
Okay. I was just trying to think of, if you wanted to do that, what would really need to change? And I don't think much would need to change on this, other than maybe, instead of saying "the" principal at each school, it could just say "a" principal.
I- i- in the, in the event that
With the identified material.
book is at multiple sites, a principal will be identified.
I can see the value in doing that. I, I, like I said, I, I don't lean towards that, because I, I really do feel like there are different communities, and that really concerns me, but I also do understand how much this is putting on the schools, and I don't like that either.
I also have mixed feelings, right? I mean, I, I think there's many ways to look at this. Um, I, I will say that, you know, our schools and media specialists have expressed that, you know, they are, I mean, if they have thirty pending reviews, that's thirty books replicated across multiple sites. I mean, that's a, that's a, a lot of, of school-based time that, you know, are, could be better directed into improving reading scores and improving graduation rates.
Right.
Um, and so, I, I'm very sensitive to that. If there's a way we can alleviate the burden on our instructional staff, I, I think getting to a procedure which allows for that would make me feel more comfortable.
I really appreciate you saying that, because I feel like this entire thing, since it's begun, is just a distraction from what our job really is. And it's very frustrating for me, because I'm not saying that everything was perfect. Certainly, it's not. There's, there, there were, there's problematic books. But this has become a big distraction. And it's so unfair to our kids and our schools, especially our Title I ones. And I think that's what upsets me more about this entire thing. When it first started, I was like a roaring lion sitting up here, because I was just like, "You've gotta be kidding me. Here's another thing that's gonna take away from our kids." And I'm not saying that there weren't problematic books. Like I said, there's, there were a few. I think, I can't remember the percentage, but it was like one-tenth of one percent, or something. Miniscule. And yet, the hours and hours and hours and hours we're spending talking about it, creating new policies about it, the legislators talking about it, and now, here we are again. Uh, one more thing. You talked about all this feedback that you garnered from principals and, and, uh, media specialists and things. Are they more in favor of doing the approach that you have stated, which is, I'm gonna call that sharing the love, where, you know, one school does, like, let's say, you know, and there's some benefit to that too. Like, if, if one school has thirty objections, right? Then this school might tackle five, and that school might tackle five, and that school might tackle five, and there's, there's some real value in that, right? Instead of everyone tackling all thirty. Um, do you feel like there is support for that, or do they wanna give it to the district to handle?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if I've heard about, like, giving it to the district to handle. I think the conversations I've had have been more around, do we all wanna review everything, or would we rather part it out? And I think honestly, the feedback has been mixed. I've been in conversations with media specialists where some of them have said, "We absolutely would rather, you know, like, each review one of the books, and we trust each other's expertise in order to, uh, do that." Um, and I've also had others say, you know, "I, I prefer making the decision for my own." And I think I've heard the same from principals. I've even heard the same from our curriculum department. I think it's such a multifaceted
Right.
gray area. Uh, you know, I don't think there's a perfect solution for it, so it's really like, what is, what gets us to the, the best process for us that is, you know, is fair and streamlined and, and protects our, protects our school-based personnel, so that they're able to do the work that matters.
Well, and that's the other thing that concerns me, is I don't want employees to feel like they're being left out in the cold. Like, I just don't want that, because I feel like this is wholly unfair. Like I said, I feel like this is like a genuine distraction from what their main job really should be. And, um, so I don't want to, I don't want them to have to deviate from that job any more than they have to. So, um, I, you're looking for feedback. My feedback would be your proposal of one school tackling it and making a decision is probably the wiser way to go, just because I think then it will hopefully lessen the burden on all the schools. So.
Could we have a hybrid approach? Like, if a principal feels like, um, I don't, I don't want, I don't really care, I don't have to make the decision me personally for my, for my school, and the district has some kind of committee or whatever, however you wanna, it could be, maybe the principal says, "I'll follow Braden Rivers' lead," or whatever, right? So, could you potentially have a hybrid where some principals may say, "I wanna make a decision for my school with my SAC, et cetera," whatever, or some that are just like, "I'll go with," you know what I mean?
If they don't like the principal at Braden Rivers.
Oh, God.
I mean.
I mean, I think, I mean, I, I think we'd wanna be fair in, in sharing the responsibility across our, our school leaders, right?
Sure, sure.
We wouldn't want one principal to suddenly be doing all the, all the reviews for the whole district, but I,
Well, I don't even mean the principal on its own.
We could workshop something.
Having a committee that would do it. Because the bottom line is, this is taking away from their normal job duties, right? So, I, I agree with Ms. Messenger. I was in the camp of having, having each one choose, because they, they are different. Each, each school site. But, at the same time, if, if your principal has to deal with ten books a month, I don't know how many, I mean, I, I guess maybe ten. I'm, may, maybe exaggeration, but it may not be. That's a lot of time during that month that they could be doing something else. And so, um, I know Dr. Weisong has talked about this too. Like, is this something that we have, I mean, and again, this is resources and time for this, but do we have some at the district level that is assigned to this? I know you are theoretically, but you've got other job responsibilities too. So, um, I don't know.
So, yes, I mean, there are districts that have a, a district committee-based approach. I think we can implement that. I think it's gonna require multiple district staff members in order to coordinate that. Traditionally, and I mean, I, I don't know, um, again, I, I'm only five months into my current role, so I, I, I don't quite know some of the things that happened before I was here. But I am aware that there was kind of a previous district-based committee and, and manatee that reviewed these materials. And from what I, the feedback I've received about that is, it was very contentious. There were a lot of like, uh, you know,
Giving opinions.
Go, well, going after committee members, because suddenly, when you convene this publicly and you invite all the stakeholders into the room to livestream it and offer feedback, and they know all the names and the people and what they've said, who are making the decisions around those books, that invites hate mail for those people. And so, it's actually very, very hard to recruit committee members. We've actually had a position, we're trying to hire for, for a district-based coordinator to facilitate this. We're actually having a very hard time finding someone to do it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Okay. The sad part about this whole thing is that we even have to have the conversation that some of this material got into our schools. One way or another, it, it ended up in our schools, and now we have to create a law that says that's inappropriate, which is what happened. So, now that we have the law, the policies have to be created around the law, and they gave us guidelines, which we have, we looked at on the onset. And I see the emails that you send out when there's a review. And there's three categories: capital without restriction, capital parent consent required. To me, that's more work on the principal, media specialists, and teachers than anything. Who's got it, who doesn't? Gotta check your file. Hang on, let me look, see if you can even check that out. And then discontinued at multiple schools. So, to me, the discontinued at our multiple schools, and then if another school wanted to object to that finding then, or outcome, then that would be the better way, in my opinion. But, to me, the keep it with consent is, um, harder to manage than each school saying, "Well, I know you pulled it, but let me look at this. It might be okay for my classroom, or my school. I'm just looking at the, um..."
Computers will, will do that.
Uh, my, my question is,
Right.
my question is, do you have, do, 'cause I'd like to give you direction. I know we've got more here. But I do wanna give him some kind of direction on, I think Ms. Foreman's more of like a centralized committee approach.
I would take it out. If, if I had my druthers, I'd take it, I'd take it out of the principal's hands altogether, and bring it
Yeah. So, I, I just kinda want, I want us to kinda give you a direction a little bit. Do you have a thought on that, Ms. Spray? Like,
I
how, how we're making decisions
The
in the process? I'm gonna come back.
Okay. I'm leaning towards the direction that Mr. Jensen is going, however, I, I just think that first line, "A" principal at the school. I don't think it needs to be "the" principal at each school. I say "the" principal at the school with identified materials. You know, and that, and again, I have to go back to identified materials. How did it get in there? I don't know.
Well, well, let's see.
Yeah, let's see.
I'm toward you, I'll be honest, I'm
Yeah, I, I am.
I liked it. I mean, in theory, I like the idea of taking it out of the principal's hands. However, before I was a board member, I can remember being there with Ms. Foreman at the previous committee. It was a open, public records committee, and the public came, and they read parts of books, and it was, it was contentious, and it wasn't fun. Uh, which doesn't mean it shouldn't happen, but if we, if we bring it up to a centralized, you're gonna have to have a committee or something, unless you're gonna be, or you designate one person to put their thumb on it. Uh, the other thought I had was just picking a, a principal, like, if there's, if there's multiple schools that have the same book, pick one principal and say, "Okay, that, you've got this one," and somebody mentioned this before, and rotate, rotate it, and then if, if one principal says, "No, I really wanna keep this book," then it pops up to your level. And, and you can make that decision. And so, that is some compromise between the centralized approach. But hopefully, if, if you just rotated it around the principals, that would take some of the burden off of them, instead of five principals having to do the same book over and over and over again.
That's what you kinda said, Ms. Messenger?
That's what he had suggested, which was basically spread the love. Like, uh, if there's five objections or three objections, give it to one school and
And make sure
allow them to do it, and, 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 you know, you make a good point, is if one says, "Well, hold on, I really wanna keep it," then maybe that's when it would arise to a higher level or something, or, or a committee, or, gosh, I don't know, but
I can workshop some.
Something like.
I just, I go to what, what you all, the prof- the, the principal, I mean, they're doing it. They're in the trenches. And, um, you know, if, if, if all of them are like, "Hey, I wanna do it myself," or if two out of, you know, three out of the seven, or four out of the seven, I, I think spreading the love is probably maybe the best way to take some burden off, is that word, the love? Um, I don't know how love it, love it is. Um, but if they, we can spread the responsibility, at least it gives a break one month, maybe, right? Or whatever, to principals.
I just wanna say one, a couple more things. One, when I've talked, talked to principals about this issue, what they had said was, most principals I had spoken to, they really just took, they listened to their media specialists. Like, if their media specialist said, "No, that needs to go," you know what I mean, then, you know, it went. So, they're, they're looking at the experts and saying, "Okay, what do you think?" Um, second, um, parental consent on a book is by definition parental rights, right? That's the parent making the decision, which is the whole point. So, I would always wanna keep that. I think that should be maintained as much as possible. If it's not good for one parent, that's okay, if I want my child to read it. That, I should have that say, that is the definition of parental rights. So, I don't, not advocating to get rid of that in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah, my point wasn't the question of parental rights. It's just a lot of work. They have to look to see who has that. Yes, they can check it out. I, I don't know. I don't, not gone into the system to say, you know, "Oh, yeah, you're okay to check out that book."
Well, for the
Not that I wanna take a right away, just that that's almost like a driving
I think in those instances, our system lets us manage it pretty well. We haven't, we haven't run in any, in, into any issues where, where that particular facet of the process has
Okay.
taken an unreasonable amount of
All right, all right. That's what it was. More about time management, not about taking anything away.
You said something that, um, is very interesting, and that is the, uh, the, the restricted access. Could that be our default? That we, we encourage principals that if they are so inclined to, you know, get this off their plate, you know, put, put, put the, put the problem to bed, um, if that is the default, rather than removing a book. I think we've gone through the, the really hot ones, okay? That, that's already happened. They've already made decisions on those. Those are gone. But, for some of the newer ones that I'm seeing pop up, you know, for, for review, it's a bit of a, you know, I, I'm reading a bunch of them, okay? And I'm not being, you know, um, you know, I'm not offended by the books, and some of them I would let my teenager read, and some I wouldn't. But that would be my choice. And if we make that the default, rather than we start, stop And if we make that the default, rather than we start, stop removing books, let's just start making them, restricting them.
I think.
You love that, huh? How good.
And I think when we're, when we, whatever this process ends up looking like, this procedure ends up looking like, as we release a new form, release a new procedure, it'll be an opportunity to retrain our principals and media specialists. And we can certainly help them understand, you know, when, kind of helping them, maybe even with some criteria, like retrain them on some of the state statutory language, the state's instructional materials training, and then kind of what criteria might help them decide when a book should fall into, into what bucket.
All right, I've, I've got a solution.
Okay.
If, if a principal says the book's got to go, I recommend the book to go, that it has to come through you for a review. So you can discourage them. But, but the point is, is that then we've got documentation, a second set of eyes is taking a look at it. We don't, you know, we don't want the bad books there, but who defines, who defines bad books? And, um, and you've got some really sharp people working with you on, on that. And, um, then that would also, because these are, these are the ones that are going to be, um, well, no, these won't be the ones challenged. But if we don't, if we don't remove books, we are going to have challenges, okay? But if we do remove books, I think it, I think we need another set of eyes on it. So that we don't have people doing this out of fear, out of exhaustion, out of, you know, let's.
We could try to workshop a, a procedure that aligns to that idea with, you know, that again, kind of treasure a balance, the, the staff time involved. But I think, I think that's a creative idea. I hadn't thought of that one before.
You'd have to pull them within five days though, right? If there's an objection.
Yes, yes. If, if they check one of those boxes, we have to remove it from the.
And where is the, this again, maybe from maybe Mrs. Diego, so you know, I've kind of read through this, what appears to be part of this law, chapter 106, section 28. I don't see any statutory language that says we can have this, this midway point where we, where we pull it or we don't pull it, or we, there's some parental consent processes. Is it, are we doing this because it, it doesn't say that we can't do that? So we've kind of made that a, like a compromise? Or where are we getting the idea that we can do this parental consent? Because as I read it, it's either it's appropriate, it's not appropriate, make a decision, pull it or leave it. I don't see any.
It's under subparagraph three, where it says each district school board must establish a process by which they can contest. And so, we, we get to, we get the discretion to come up with that process for ourselves within certain limitations, of course. But that, they're, they're trying to give flex. I imagine the legislature didn't know what the right process was. And so, they're trying to give a little bit of flexibility to the districts to kind of navigate that themselves within certain confines and.
Additionally, at the end of the school year, we have to do our report to the state on obviously which books were objected to and this district-based decisions on those. I believe that form also contains the opportunity for the district to identify books that were restricted and not just removed. So the state form even kind of provides for that.
That's what I'm trying to get at. So there's some, some DOE rule or statutory process that allows this midway point of remove it, keep it, put it under, put it under parental review. Okay, great. And the bottom line for me is some, it's in statute that we have to do this. So somebody's going to have to use some of their time to do this, whether it's principals or centralized committees. So the, maybe what we're trying to do is minimize the pain, so to speak. And, you know, rotating the, the love around or rotating the pain around probably, to me, seems like the, the way to minimize the pain, so to speak. And when I say that, I don't mean I don't think that we shouldn't be doing this because unfortunately, there are some books that end up in our schools that need to not be there. But the state, the legislature's put this in place, so someone's going to have to spend some time doing it. It's just, it's a statutory requirement, so, great, thank you.
Ready for next slide?
A little help?
No, I appreciate, I.
I mean, I think we've kind of jumped around, I don't know if we've always, we've stayed just on that one slide, unfortunately. But I don't know what, I mean, everything we talked about, we may have already touched on some of your, stole some of your thunder, but go ahead.
But, um, no, the, the feedback is very, very much valued, I appreciate it. This, this slide articulates, so if they're dissatisfied with the school-based decision, slide articulates that it would be reviewed at the, really at my level, the deputy superintendent of instructional services will review in coordination with district staff, other stakeholders, obviously reaching back out to the schools to understand their, why, why they made the decisions that they did. And then within 30 days issuing a written decision to the complainant. So this is the appeal process. Now, currently, the process moves directly from the school-based decision to school board review, which involves a hearing and then a recommendation from a hearing officer to the board. The reason we put this language in here and this level of review is, one, if, you know, if a, I guess, thinking about our, our school-based personnel and the positions they're put in and them trying to use their best expertise, but also being, you know, afraid of being called up in front of the school board and having to explain their decision-making to the school board, right? I'm not saying that you're scary, I'm saying that, you know, some people have more opportunities to speak to the school boards than others. And so, this procedure creates an opportunity where, since all of the library media appeals process would flow through the curriculum department and the deputy superintendent of instructional services, if the decision at the district level wanted to be then appealed to the school board, I and the district staff would be the ones up here, you know, making the case for why we made the decision that we did. And it would take that responsibility off of the school-based personnel. Once again, protecting their time because, you know, they'd obviously have to do a lot of preparation in order to come before the school board. I obviously have a lot more comfort with the nuances of policy. I have more ready access to, more ready access to counsel. And so, I think this just kind of produces an extra layer of protection. One, in case the schools make a decision that really should be reevaluated. Or two, if both the school makes a decision, I support that decision and that complainant wants to appeal to the school board, I'm then the one providing all the evidence to the school board, organizing the hearing and all of the associated processes that go along with it. And so, that was kind of the motivation behind adding this extra level of review.
Okay, first I want to comment, it means that you don't, you don't fear us. And we've got some work to do here, you know.
Oh, no.
Okay. I want to talk about who can file appeals, okay? You've got a person who, let's say, is not, doesn't have a child in the district, who's, but is a resident. They have to be a resident of Manatee County. They file the objection, okay? A decision is made and they don't like it, okay? They can, they can appeal that, right?
Correct.
And then by the time it goes to a special magistrate, which is the final end, they can't because it's got to be a parent. Is that correct?
For the special magistrate?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that language.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's got to be a parent. Now.
Can you look that up and see if that's correct?
I'm, I'm almost positive that's correct.
It's correct, has to be a parent.
I have to, I think it's to be a parent and the one that objected.
So if the complaint, so, so that person who is not a, they cannot take it as far as the special magistrate.
That's on the next slide, by the way, Mary.
Oh, okay.
I can flip over there really fast.
Yes, it has to be a parent.
Well, of course, I'm jumping ahead because I want to, the, the identification of the complainant and who can file the appeal.
It does have to be a parent.
What if a parent, you know, the principal makes the decision. Complaintant is out, is, I wouldn't say outsider, but, but not a parent. But another parent in the school says, whoa, wait a minute. You know, now can they file an objection and bring it to you?
So currently, in this draft, I specified that only the original objector can file an appeal.
Okay.
My rationale for including that was, and again, this is just based on my review of other districts' policies, me workshopping ideas around this with our district-based staff and, and other people involved in the district. If any parent in the district could make the appeal, then I assume, kind of playing this out in my head, everything would be appealed all the way to the school board level. So every single book that's objected to would get appealed to the school board level. And I think that would require an extreme amount of staff time and taxpayer money.
Can I just say one thing? So when I was at FSBA, I went to the one about book banning, which.
I attended both of them, all sessions on it.
And, and that was something they specifically did say was, was their understanding of the law was that the objector had, it had to be the parent, it had to be a parent and the parent had to be the objector. Like, that was their understanding as they presented it to us. As if it goes to the magistrate, it's not just any parent, it is the parent that objected. That's, that is my understanding of.
A parent of a kid at that school?
No.
Or just a parent of.
A parent.
Objector.
So the person that objects, if, if it, if they appeal and then they want to go to the special magistrate, which is the next step, courtesy of new state law, yay, um, then they have to be a parent and they have to be the person that objected in order for it to go to the magistrate.
You're saying a parent, a parent of.
I don't think it's specified.
Any student, even if they.
In the district.
Currently in the district, out of the district, you were a parent, that's what I'm asking.
I see what you're saying.
I'm asking.
With a student in the district.
You have a fourth grader, but you're, you're, you're talking about a 10th grade book? Do you have to have a high school student? Do I have a graduate? I was, I'm still a parent?
I don't know.
Because you're always a parent.
Specifically to that level. I think the level, what, I think the understanding is a parent with a child in the district.
I, that, I don't know.
So I mean, if that was, if that was the case.
Just ask her.
The. Statutory language in the policy really.
That's what I was asking, look it up.
As like, like two gate, I guess, the, the normal process, the objection process we've been mostly talking about, which happens within the district, the, you know, school-based review, district-based review, school board-based review, that can be a parent or a resident.
Yes.
Like that. But I guess, once we've reached the school board decision, and you can see that on this slide here, I struck out the decision of the board shall be final, which is in our current language because of that special magistrate provision. I guess if, if it says only parent in the state language, then in order to go to the special magistrate threshold, like I guess a resident could have taken it to the school board, but perhaps only a parent could appeal. But I guess that would be ultimately the decision of the state as to whether they wanted to take that appeal or not.
You're right that if, if you make it any parent can object, it'll all end up with us. It will often end up with us. And that's, I like your thought process there, and I agree with you. Well, with 45,000 students, somebody will object to everything all the time. So.
And we will, you know, per our current policy, we are required to, you know, pay for a, for a hearing officer and to do that. And then if it makes it to the special magistrate level, we are also required to incur all the costs associated with that.
Right.
There's some, some financial burdens to the district along with this process as well. So kind of skipping on to the, to the slide that we were just discussing, you see that all I did was remove that decision of the board shall be final, insert the statutory language around. This is again, back to Neola language. So the only language that was staff recommendation, that's not Neola, was the revised procedure, which we just completed. And now we're back to the Neola language with the determination as well as the state board of education language. There's also some language at the end of this around the New World's Reading Initiative, which as you're familiar with, is a DOE initiative that provides free books, mails free books to students in elementary school who are not yet reading on grade level. They, every year since they've launched that program, they've expanded how many students it serves. So this language is reflecting the expanded number of students that program serves. So that's, it used to be just, I believe, K through three students, and then it became K through five. And then, you know, they just keep expanding it. So that reflects that additional language.
Oh, before you move on, I just want you to know it says net yet reading, so not yet reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, that should be not yet reading, yes, my apologies. And then this next, the next two little paragraphs are again, related to New World's Reading Initiative. We're required to enter a data sharing agreement with the initiative's administrator, which is, I believe, US Lasting Center, which we have a strong relationship with already. And they're the ones we provide data to, to help identify students for the New World's Reading Initiative. And then, as well as the annual report to the Florida Department of Education, that's where I spoke to Mr. Tatum, that end of year report where we report to the commissioner of education, identifying the materials to which we received an objection, what was removed, discontinued, and any, any material that was not removed or discontinued in the rationale for not removing or discontinuing the material.
And all this is Neola language?
Yes, that's Neola language in mere state session.
Ms. Doug, do you have a?
I found the definition of parent. So it's not actually defined, but it does say, a process by which the parent of a public school student. So I would say that, that they are.
Currently in any grade, okay.
Says parent of a public school student. So I would assume it has to be someone, you know, it can't just be, I'm a parent, but my kid isn't going to school.
They're 40.
Right, so they have to be a parent of a public school student.
There's one, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I've got several things. First of all, um, this is from my days in the training at, about, uh, policymaking, is that the fact that we advertise this policy, but we are making substantive changes. I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, fellow board members, but I don't think our clock is ticking yet because we are making substantive changes. So the fact that we, so I think we're going to have to move this further down, further later. Because we're not, you know, you're advertising and when you advertise, you have to put the, the suggested policy out for people to see.
But it's in the workshop, the same, we're still using it and it's still in the 30 days of the workshop, right? So it's still within the 30, we could, we could do another workshop, right?
I'm just throwing it out, you know, because, because if we have, if you make changes and we don't see those until the agenda for the January meeting when they get adopted, public doesn't have 30 days to weigh in on substantial changes. So I'm just, just throwing that out there. Like to point out, and it, the, the session she was talking about down at FSBA was put on by the attorneys for Lee County, okay? And they touted, obviously, their own, their own policies and their own work. But one of the things that they did, because it is confusing, is they took, and our policy does the same thing. Our policy takes adoption of materials that are not, not just media center because that has a whole different process, it has a different, you know, committee requirements and objections, you know, are different than they are for media centers. They broke them out into separate, into separate policies, which I thought was smart. They had, actually, they broke it out into three. But I think that would eliminate a lot of confusion because people could be looking at it and going, oh, wait, your committee has to be this way, but it's not, that's for textbook adoption. So just, just a suggestion. The, uh, I'm concerned, I have strong concerns still about the sunshine. I think we're setting ourselves up for some problems if we don't have, if we don't have, um, uh, public notice and the public being able to weigh in. And plus, the committees, if there is a committee, has to have parents and community members in it, I think. So, let me see, open to the public, committees convened, must include parents of students who will have access to materials. So the fact that parents and the community are being excluded from whatever is going on at the principal level, I, I have a problem with that, okay? Just as a, someone who likes the transparency, I like to see what's going on. So I don't know if it, I don't know how we're going to overcome that one. The documentation is also very important to me, that everything gets documented, including what the public commenter talked about with shadow banning. If there's a book, okay, and Christian and the Hugging Lion, no, no objection was filed on that one. If there's a book, okay, and Christian and the Hugging Lion, no, no objection was filed on that one, okay? But someone in the media center looked at it and said, "This could be a problem." And so they pulled it. And it never had an objection, but the fact that somebody made a decision, uh, that disturbs me, that we don't have public, um, um, public notice on that. And I would really like to see some, uh, documentation and those, all of those items being reported back to the district. You know, so you, you could have stopped the Christian book from getting pulled, you know, if it, if it had crossed your desk, I would assume. So, um, or somebody on your staff. So, uh, we, I think we've gotta, we've gotta tighten up on that, you know, and, uh, get better documentation of any book, any book for any reason leaving the library. And that is included in this policy, um, further, uh, further back, when it talked about, um, inventory of, um, of the, and it talked about, you know, it just said, "A book could be removed." Here we go. I'm not finding it now, but a book could be removed, but there, but I think we need to identify why is the book being removed? Is it too old? Is it in poor condition? Is it, um, uh, is it, um, no longer relevant? Some of the stuff gets dated, you know, um, but, or there are two guys that might be gay living in an apartment in New York City, you know? But, um, just, we need, we need to be, we need documentation on that, we should have that.
I can work with our district media specialist and see kind of what the Weeding Report inside of Destiny looks like, as well as its capabilities, and then, and kind of-
Oh, okay, oh, so there is some, okay.
Yeah, we can, so I mean, it's, we keep our, our library media inventory in a, obviously, an inventory system. And, um, so we're able to generate reports about, you know, how large collections are. They do monthly circulation reports for me, so we make sure that schools are using their media center as well. Um, but the Weeding Report is also a piece of it, right? Like you spoke to, there's an annual process of, of media center maintenance that happens where there's books that are too old or irrelevant, or, you know, um, that you pull. And I mean, typically, that's a fairly substantial number of books every year, um, if you're constantly adding new books to your collection and cycling out old ones. So, um, I can see kind of what information's contained in that report, or I can, I can talk to her and then follow up with you on that.
Okay, thanks. And my thing is the transparency. Um, I love that we are posting books that are under review now and what the action has been. But we don't have information about why is a book being objected to? There were, especially this last batch, it was a small batch, but one of them just really had me scratching my head. But, um, throw this out there, it's a crazy idea, but, um, what would you think about posting, at least the, you know, the state form? Just has the list of what the book is and which of the, is it, is it pornography? Is it, you know, the reason for their objection? If that could get posted online, um, personally, I would, I would like to know who filed the objection too, because if we're having multiple people, you know, one person filing multiple objections, that, that gets into a whole nother thing. But, um, but the point is, is just transparency, you know, for the public to see.
Once we move on to the state form and we have standardized that completely, I, I don't see there being any reason why we couldn't include which of those reasons was selected as part of that matrix we post online, that would be very-
And that's why I would like to see us not wait to put the state form, uh, you and I talked about that. I really want to see the state form start being used now, because that does provide that information about the, the reason. Fact that a book contains sexual content does not mean it's pornographic, and statute backs that up. So I think we need to get a better understanding of what it is the, the objector is objecting to. I, I, I ask you, please, put, put, start using the state form. Thank you. And thanks for everything, I know, I know this is just-
Yeah, my pleasure.
You know, yeah.
Do we have, this is, this is to throw a real monkey wrench in everything. Do we, and then we're gonna move on, because we've got another thing. Uh, that's what I like to do, throw a monkey wrench and run. No, um, so, so we've done a pretty good job in the school system, I would imagine, for X amount of years, with, and you have it in this policy, movie rating system, right? Movies, what movies we can show inside the school and not, correct? Done a pretty good job with that. Have we had any objections to any movies that may or may not be in, and again, open up a can of worms here, throw a big monkey wrench. Has there been any objection to movies, like, "Oh, my gosh, you got this movie in your system? This is uncalled for, this is not right." No, right? I'm looking at your face, no, right?
I'm not aware of one.
Legislature has not, the legislature has not, there's not even a challenge for it, right? Legislature hadn't even brought this up, right? So, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is we've got a G and a PG and a PG thirteen and an R and an NC seventeen, right? We've got those ratings pretty good, and for the majority of part, ninety-nine percent of the public knows what those are. They're a pretty good standard wise with those things. Why aren't the books just following that lead? Is my question, and I know we can't answer that, I know, I'm not asking for an answer. Again, I'm throwing the monkey wrench and, and running, but why don't we just follow that lead? If you've got, if, if you've got a PG thirteen book, shouldn't be in a classroom that, or, or school that doesn't have kids that are thirteen to seventeen, period. Because you can't have a movie PG thirteen either. So, we've already got a system created that we all pretty much say, "Hey, movies, yeah." And, and, and that, you know what I mean? So why don't we just follow suit, is my question? So if, if I can't show a sexual scene in class, wh- what's the difference in reading about it? So anyways, that's my monkey wrench. And we're gonna move on to the next topic. Nope, I, I told you, I'm throwing the wrench and running.
Whoa.
I, that's what I said.
Okay, I've got a wrench, I want to throw.
Nope, no more wrenches.
Uh, come on, no, no, I'm serious.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is there a way, I, I know we can't do it in this policy, okay? But is there a way that we can, there's nothing in state statute that says a book can't come back into the library? Okay, doesn't say, it, let's say that the, the process did not work, okay? That, that it wasn't, um, board members, I filed an objection to one of the, uh, to one of the decisions last year. But, and I got turned down, I'm just, you know, um-
I'm sorry, Ms. Foreman.
You're a parent.
But I, I, yeah. No, no, I'm a, I'm a community member, I filed it as a community member.
Oh, wait, so we just said the statute says it has to be a parent of a-
Well, now, I think-
Well, now, you know, but, yeah, that's, this was old, yeah. And, um-
Half of a wrench.
Yeah, well, and that's only to take it to the magistrate, and I'm not taking it to the magistrate, I promise. Um, I'm still bitter. But, um, but the point is, is that, and I understand why, eh, the, the series of events and the timing of why the decision was made on this book, um, but if you, if that, I strongly disagree with it, okay? And, um, I can't believe that that book is going to be, it's, it's restricted, it's not even pulled. What, I can't believe it's going to be restricted for the rest of my life and the rest of our kids' lives in, in our schools. Question for Mr. Dye, is there a way that we can develop a process to-
Kindle.
Huh?
Kindle.
Kindle, there you go.
Huh?
Kid can get it to Kindle.
Right, no, 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 no. Yeah.
No?
No, you've got-
So many parents of means can have the access to the book then?
Public library, you can get it to public-
Nope, not anymore.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
Well, okay.
So-
There, okay.
So, so-
I'm gonna finish the wrench if I may.
Can you research, can you research on that?
Is there a way that we can get, get, get a process to cons, have a district review of previously determined objections?
An appeal of an appeal?
No, there's been no, been no appeal, it was a decision.
I don't know of a method right now.
Okay.
That, that did come up in that, I don't know if it came up when you did that reading, FSBA one, but that did-
I did, but I didn't like what they said.
They said you can't do it.
Okay, so FSBA says-
Not FSBA, the attorneys that were there doing the presentation said, once it's gone, it's gone.
Statute doesn't allow for it.
Yeah, that's what they said.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say you can't do it.
My final thing is, there are some that might be in that little, very few books are in that little gray area that should not just know it's not gonna get in, back into our system. Okay, there's, then there's the gray area that Ms. Foreman, I think, is alluding to. Some of those that she wished could go back in. So, it's just a few, I'm guessing, not a mass amount of, of, of one book, okay? By whoever wants to read it, a Kindle. Okay, anyway, moving on.
I will hand out copies of it.
Sure, yeah.
Do you have that right to do that?
Because you brought up movies.
Right.
The form and the process does apply to movies.
Okay, but not have been objected yet.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation.
No, thank you.
Yep.
Um, all right, last, uh, workshop item is discussion regarding school board process of public comment. I know on here is, is specifically allowing public comment by phone. Uh, Mr. Tatum, this was one of your, um, topics, so take it away.
Sure, so when I was elected, a particular community member, we all know him, Mr. Glenn, for the record, Gibellina, asked that we consider having public comment being made available by phone and maybe even by, by video. I, he said something about the, the county does that, that they have an opportunity to do that. And so I thought, I said, "Okay, I'll bring it up for a discussion to see if that's something we like to do." We're finally getting around to it. I will say that in listening to my ethics training over the last, the four hours that I, that I did here recently, there was some in, interesting conversation actually in the ethics training where some of the lawyers brought up the fact that if the technology doesn't work and then someone doesn't get their three minutes and they get cut off and, I mean, again, it's one of those pros and cons things, you know, you're gonna have to weigh the pros and the cons. I, I am not in favor of, of doing it. I think that if you want to, you know, you can write us a public comment, or you can show up if it's important enough. Some people say, "Well, I can never get off work." Well, we've given, we've given you a five o'clock meeting, and we've given you a ten o'clock in the morning meeting. Uh, we could have them at eight o'clock in the evening, and we could start them at six in the morning so people could get here before and after work. Then the staff would have to, I'm sure Mr. Jensen would like to get here, you want to get here at five-thirty in the morning to get ready for your, maybe you're here anyway. You know what I mean? I mean, there, we have to balance that out too. So you can write us, you can call us. My phone, my, you know, my cell phone number is right on the, on the web, website, anybody can call me anytime, you can write me anytime, you can show up here at either ten o'clock or five o'clock. And I'm, I'm just not in favor of it, but I just wanted to have a quick discussion about it and see if it's something we'd like to explore or not, so.
I just wanted to say that we have done this in the past, I don't, um, prior to your time on the board, um, during COVID. And, um, it was very difficult.
Yeah, but-
Um, because you'd have people interrupting during the middle of the meeting. They would refuse, they would unmute themselves and interrupt over and over and over again, which is, and you wouldn't even know who it was because there could be multiple people. So it was, it's very difficult, um, just management. And now we have new systems, like the, all this new grant, I don't even know how that would even work now because it's, we have just totally even new, different systems. And I'm not a techie person, so I wouldn't even know how to even go about doing that, or if it's possible with the new systems we even have in place. I'm sure there's a way to figure it out, but then you have people interrupting you. I think you bring up an interesting point about getting cut off and things, but I remember like, uh, being in the chair through that and then watching the chair after me go through that, and it was always like, "Hello, are you there?" All right, and then you'd wait. "Okay, you gotta, you gotta unmute yourself." "Are you there?"
Someone else went and muted themselves and it's-
"If your phone number ends in blah, 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 blah."
Yeah.
Uh, oh, can you, uh, can you un, and it would, it would really, honestly, like, it would just, it was like that for like, I don't, I-
Painful.
It was really just clunky and cumbersome, and I agree with you, like, we are so accessible in so many ways. We're out in the community, we're taking phone calls whenever somebody calls us, we're answering emails. If they want to submit a public comment, it goes into the record. I mean, all the emails, we could go into a record anyways. I just feel like we're already very accessible in so many different ways. And, and in a more immediate way than if you wait until public comment. Like if you email me, I'm gonna respond to you a lot more than if you wait the two weeks for public comment. You know, if it's really a pressing thing, you can, my phone number is publicly listed too. You can call me up, and you're gonna get an answer way faster than if you come and wait your two weeks just to say whatever it is you wanted to say. So I, I agree with you on that, it, it just, it was very clunky. I think you bring up an even more interesting point about, you know, the, the video part of it and, um, because that was the other thing I was gonna say is, you know, we didn't do video, we just did call in. I mean, we didn't, we, I don't remember ever having like lost calls, but you know-
We did, we did.
It was clunky, and it would take a long time, and people would unmute themselves in the middle of meetings, and then not know how to unmute themselves when they were really trying to talk, and it was just- And you be, you know, you always have technical difficulties with stuff, and I think you'd need a whole nother person to run it at this point because we have all these different systems.
And they did have that at the county, a whole person that ran it, sat there at the desk and-
That's my point.
Just managed it, and I was- Yeah, they did a good job, but they still had the same thing. If you're there, please tap star six to unmute. So it was clunky, that's a good word for it. And I attended either meetings here or meetings over there, and I think I even called in here once, and I even called in over there once. And, okay, and you're, you're listening for your last three digits, and if you don't hear it, then you go on to the next person. And you're like, "Wait, did they miss me?" Uh, so I, I wouldn't be in favor of it. And, and the thing is, how many hop button items have been on the agenda? And you'll have a whole room full of people and overflow. Uh, so when there's a topic that has a lot of interest, all of the same people that says, "I can't be there," will be here. So, um, I understand the work environment and all of that, but email me, call me, text me. Text me, that's even better, I like that better, and I can respond, so.
Please don't text me, I'm putting that on the record, please don't.
Please don't text you?
I don't like to, I don't like to text.
Well, text me, call me, my, call me.
That's even better.
Well, people want to be heard by all of us, so the fact that they, they might send a, an email to one person might not accomplish what they want. I'm, you know, I'm agreeable to if, if the rest of the board wanted to go with telephone, um, because the more accessible we are and the more opportunity, I think the better. Um, the fact that we can't seem to get the technology to work, you know, there's, I'm sure there are ways to do it better, but, uh, but I'll, I'll abide by your, your lead on that. One thing though, that I would like to consider, and that is when people write in for public comment. I think it gets lost in the shuffle. It's, makes it to the minutes, but it's not part of the agenda.
Not read aloud, too.
It's not read aloud, um, and I think that would open it up for, because if somebody calls in, whatever they have to say on the telephone, they could put in writing. And if we would read it aloud, it would save them having to do that.
I guess my only question to that is, what is the purpose of public comment? The purpose of public comment is for you to speak and give information to the board.
Right.
Not to peacock yourself on what you're saying and that sort of thing. So to me, if I'm gonna write an email as a public comment, I'm doing it because I'm communicating to the board, not because, "Oh, I want my voice, I want my voice to be heard on this TV, I wish there was no screens on TV." But you know what I mean, like, I just feel like, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're being heard, we're all getting the public comment. I don't think it changes-
Are we all reading it?
I don't think it changes that, well, I mean, that's each individual board member, but are we listening if we read it out loud? I don't know, you know what I mean?
More chance of it-
So I just, I, I think that, that, you know, we have, all of us, our direct numbers are on, you can call the board and get it. And that direct number, I'll guarantee you this, that direct number's gonna get me better than hearing over the loudspeakers or have someone read an email, like, call.
But if it's something that we're gonna vote on, and it doesn't, and we don't get it before the meeting, that's, defeats the purpose.
We don't get what before the meeting?
The, the, the written public comment.
It has to be by in person. You have to be here before the board.
I guess I've never.
Called to order.
What do you mean?
Same thing with.
Can you just email us? I don't understand.
Yeah, there's, there's an email public comment available online.
Right. And then it just gets sent right to us, right when they do it, right?
No.
It doesn't wait for the meeting, does it?
Sometimes.
Sometimes I don't see it until after.
Oh, I never really see a difference, huh?
Can I say something? There, there have definitely been times in the past where we've gotten it afterwards, which is frustrating. But I will say, in the old system, once again, the old, not this new one, it was attached to the agenda. I remember being able to, like, see them.
Ooh, that would be good.
But I don't know if you can do that in this new one.
On it, I do kinda.
I remember.
Before Granicus?
Yeah.
I wasn't here before Granicus.
I'm, I'm almost positive, maybe I'm crazy, but I'm almost positive, it was in it. It was attached in there as, like, public comment. It was in there.
Maybe we can see if we can do that with Granicus.
And.
I don't know.
But the, but we had, when we first decided to, I don't know if you can, I, in the old one, I, I, I could be crazy, but I really think we had it in there.
It was in the minutes. It wasn't in the agenda.
Okay, maybe. I really remember seeing it, but I could be wrong. Maybe I just remember seeing them during meetings, but in my email. The other thing I was gonna say is, the read, read aloud portion, that was something that was discussed when we first decided to do the public comment email, 'cause that, we, and we had this lengthy debate of, would you really want video of yourself reading something that they're gonna submit? Right? Because that's gonna then be used, we're all politicians. That's going to then be used against you, taken out of context. They could write whatever, they could write whatever.
It's a reality to read to us.
Well, that was the debate. Who would you wanna do that to? I mean, that was the other debate, right?
You gotta find the best voice in the district.
But, I mean, but that was always the debate, it's like, it would never be able to be somebody sitting up here, because then.
No, they would chop it up in videos, absolutely.
Exactly. It would be so abused.
Yes.
And I think that was the concern, is, who are you going to make read whatever they're gonna write down? Because that's really wholly unfair to whomever has to read it, rather than just making sure we get it in a timely manner, you know?
Yeah.
And I like your idea of attached to the agenda, if that's possible. I really think it used to be there, but I could be wrong.
Why not just, when that form gets submitted, all of our emails are, when you click send, it goes to, goes to all five of us.
That's what I thought it did.
If you submit public comment, it just, it's part of that email trail, wherever that form goes. It goes to Tatum, Foreman, Cho.
That's what I thought it did.
And then I, and I can choose to look at it or not look at it, which I'll look at.
Send, send a test.
Um.
Send a test.
We, we can look into that, though, Ms. Cox, and we can look into that, how that would work. Thank you for that. Great meeting. Anything else for the good cause?
Well, have a good Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, everybody.
I'll use my others for board comments.
Won't see ya.
Meeting, I guess.
Hmm? There's no board comment?
No, I see that now.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Ms. Messenger.
Oh, thanks.
When is that?
December twenty-eighth.
Oh, we come back, we'll have a cake for you.
I'm okay.
Nope.
I don't like aging, so, no, thank you.
All right. Thanks, y'all. Staff, thank you very much. Thank y'all. We adjourned.